Okay, group, we're gonna go now.[5.65][5.65](laughter)
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting into order tonight. We have a roll call by our city clerk Kathy Valdez.
The record should reflect that all members are present.
If you all rise and join us, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Contreras.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Boyne Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Boyne Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. So I'd like to remind everyone this evening that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow the public for input and to facilitate city business without disruption of our meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed under the Presentation portion of the Agenda only. Attendees should remain seated during the meeting, and persons needing to stand are requested to step outside the City Council chambers where video and audio of the meeting are playing. This is also listed on your Agenda cover sheet. So if there's students, are there students here tonight? Are there any rent show students here tonight? A couple, yeah. Students wishing to receive credit for attending this evening's meeting must stay for a minimum of one hour, and however, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. So when you're ready to leave, you can ask one of the sheriff deputies or a staff member in the back of the room to sign your paper. To speak for three minutes on an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you want to speak on and give it to the Clerk's Secretary. Speaker slips are available just outside the City Council chambers on the table out there. So next is our approval of our agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes tonight.
Okay, with that, we have three presentations this evening. I'd like to invite my council to join me down at the podium down there, and we will do that. Okay, so the first presentation, I'd like to invite Chief Han to the podium to receive a proclamation declaring September to be National Preparedness Month in the City of Vista.
Am I reading this proclamation or is Chief Han? I am? Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna read this proclamation. Hold on here. So...
Can I give this to you? Hey, did you hit one, too?
No, I'm one ahead.
Oh, no, they don't.
Sorry, sorry. That's the next one. Forgive me.
(laughter) Okay, this is the first one. Whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, has designated September as National Preparedness Month, whereas California residents commonly experience the effects of various disasters ranging from severe winter storms to major earthquakes and devastating wildland fires resulting in damages costing hundreds of millions of dollars. In May 2014, San Diego County wildfires were the largest wildfires in the region since the devastating fires of 2007, highlighting the importance of disaster preparedness among individuals and institutional levels. Whereas the aftermath of 2003, 2007, 2014, and 2017 fires in San Diego County also demonstrated the necessity for careful and thorough emergency planning and preparedness among individuals, communities, and agencies locally. And whereas the loss of life and property damage can be greatly reduced if appropriate emergency preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a major emergency. Whereas residents of Vista are encouraged to register online with Alert San Diego in order to receive San Diego County-specific emergency notifications or emergency information related to evacuations and local disasters. And whereas the mayor and members of the Vista City Council urge residents to be aware that after an emergency, you may need to survive on your own for several days, being prepared means having your own food, water, and other supplies to last for at least 72 hours. Residents are encouraged to visit readysandiego.org online to access a list of supplies for building your own emergency kit, as well as a free printable disaster plan guide. So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as National Preparedness Month, and be it further proclaimed that the mayor and members of the Vista City Council urge all persons to learn what to do before, during, and after major emergencies to mitigate injuries, loss of life, and property damage. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Han. Did you want to say something? Okay, I'll move over. I'll change places.
Okay. Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the proclamation. I accept that on behalf of the Fire Department, city staff, and you, the residents. Very pleased that we are recognizing this month. In addition, September, in addition in September to being National Preparedness Month, it's also National Fire Prevention Week, and I'd like to invite everyone, the entire community, to our fire station number five down at 2009 South Melrose on October 12th. We're having an open house. There will also be some displays detailing disaster preparedness and fire prevention at that station. And tomorrow in addition, we're also having a Preparedness Fair at the Gloria McClellan Adult Activity and Resource Center, that's a mouthful, at 9:30 to 12:00. So anybody interested in that, that will be going on also. And my last comment, we have about 55,000 Vista residents who have registered at readysandiego.org. And if you are not one of those 55,000, please go to readysandiego.org and register so you can get information at times of a disaster. Thank you.[410.56][410.56](applause)
You stay here for a second. Okay, I'm asking the chief to stay here. If you don't know, Chief Han is retiring next week. I know. We have a proclamation for you to celebrate your years of service with the city and to thank you for taking care of the residents of Vista all these years. So I'm gonna read this proclamation. So we have, yeah, we did that for you. So it's a surprise, he didn't know we were doing this, so it's a surprise. Whereas, Fire Chief Jeff Han is retiring on October 1st, 2019, after almost 35 years of dedicated service to the City of Vista. Jeff Han began his career with the City of Vista as a volunteer paramedic intern in 1984 and was hired as a firefighter paramedic on January 6, 1986. Jeff was promoted to fire captain in 1997, to battalion chief in 2006, and to deputy fire chief in 2012. On December 31st, 2015, Jeff was appointed fire chief, only the second chief in Vista's history to be promoted from within. Over the course of his career with the Vista Fire Department, Chief Han responded to well over 12,000 medical and fire emergencies, that's a lot, in the City of Vista and the surrounding communities. He served on wildfire strike teams throughout the state, including the 2007 Witch Fire here in San Diego County. During the 2017 Lilac Fire, Chief Han commanded the Local Operations Section, coordinating evacuation and repopulation efforts in Vista and neighboring areas. And whereas Jeff, as Jeff progressed through the ranks in the fire department, he was active in numerous programs, committees, and assignments. Jeff served as vice president for the Vista Firefighters Association, acted as the department's photographer, served on committees for design and selection of fire apparatus and ambulances, and the development of countywide specifications for personal protective equipment, and served as the city's fire marshal. During his tenure as chief, Jeff has been instrumental in developing the fire department's Behavioral Health Program, which includes peer support for fire staff that are experiencing mental health impacts from participating in high-stress incidents, including introduction of Clifford, the therapy dog, that serves as a resource for firefighters undergoing emotional stress from on-duty incidents. In 2017, Chief Han was also instrumental in the re-establishment of a fourth ambulance in Vista. This has resulted in improved service to the community and has reduced reliance on mutual response and other ambulances in our fleet. Chief Han advocated for the addition of a permanent emergency management position, which was approved in 2018. This position has allowed the city to be better prepared in the event of a disaster by consistently training staff and working with regional partners to ensure the safety of all Vista residents. Chief Han is the pipe major for the Pipes and Drums of California Professional Firefighters, CPF. The CPF performs annually at the International Association of Firefighters, Fallen Firefighters' Memorial, the California Firefighters' Memorial, and the Firefighter Cancer Support Network fundraiser. As a part of the CPF, Chief Han has played bagpipes at numerous funerals in the state of California for fallen firefighters and police officers. Whereas even with his long and esteemed career in the fire service, Jeff Han will tell you that his greatest achievement is his family. Jeff has been married to his wife Debbie for 27 years, and they have two adult sons, Andrew and Joe. So wait. So now therefore, the mayor and members of our Vista City Council express their sincere appreciation to Fire Chief Jeff Han for his dedication and almost 35 years of service to the City of Vista, and hereby proclaim October 1st, 2019, as Chief Jeff Han Day in the City of Vista. Congratulations to you.[636.58][636.58](applause) You don't have to say anything.
I'm good.[691.28][691.28](laughter) After all that, what can I say?
Okay, I lost her words now. Okay, now I would like to invite our Code Enforcement Manager, Jessica Farrell, to the podium to receive a proclamation declaring the second week of October 2019 to be Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Vista. And here she comes, Jessica. So here's the...
Proclamation for you.
Whereas the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers has proclaimed the second week in October each year as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens through the enforcement of local and state laws and ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health, environmental health and life safety. Whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and trained professionals who prevent neighborhood deterioration, enhance the safety of the community, and help preserve property values through application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. And whereas code enforcement officers occupy a highly visible role in the City of Vista, diligently working with Vista residents and businesses to improve the quality of life and maintain community standards. Vista code enforcement officers regularly work with the Sheriff's Department, other city departments, and external agencies to effectively coordinate information and pursue difficult cases that require diligence, patience, and understanding in the process building bridges between the city, its residents, and business owners. And the mayor and members of the Vista City Council recognizes our code enforcement officers who faithfully serve our community and acknowledge their critical role helping to improve the quality of life within our community. So therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council hereby proclaim the second week of October 2019 as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Vista, and encourage Vista residents to join in expressing their appreciation for the dedication and continued service of our code enforcement officers. So thank you, Jessica, and I don't know if you want to say anything.[818.94][818.94](applause) Okay, and I have one more proclamation today. Are we doing pictures? I don't see anybody. There's no one to take a picture. Oh, there.
Is there a code officer in?
Oh, where? Wait, do we have other code officers here?
Come on, come on.
Come on, come on. Don't be shy.[845.12][845.12](applause) So do you recognize these faces, you guys?[885.78][885.78](laughter) I have one more here. Last but not least, I'd like to have the Knights of Columbus representatives Roger Rowe and Bob DiMaggio, as well as the Downstown staff and residents, come forward to receive a proclamation declaring October 18th, 19th, and 20th, 2019, to be Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive Days in the City of Vista. After the presentation, we'll give Allison, Kim, Joe, and Andrew a few minutes to sell Tootsie Rolls to those who'd like to buy some. So let me read the proclamation first here. Whereas the Knights of Columbus will hold their 32nd Annual Tootsie Roll Drive on October 18th, 19th, and 20th, and over 600 councils of the Knights of Columbus in California will conduct their annual candy drive in communities across the state to raise funds for intellectually disabled children and adults in California. All money collected locally will be donated to Downstown, a nonprofit organization with residential homes in North County for adults with developmental disabilities such as Down Syndrome. Whereas intellectually disabled citizens are productive, contributing members of society, and funds raised through this candy drive will assist Downstown in supporting the continued independence of these citizens. The Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation and support of all involved with this candy drive and commend them for their efforts to help others. And so now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim October 18th, 19th, and 20th, 2019, as Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive Days in the City of Vista, and urge all the citizens to support this important fundraising activity to help intellectually disabled children and adults in Vista and all throughout California. So there.[1017.61][1017.61](applause) And I think, oh, we've got pictures going on. Okay. Okay. How about Terry? Wait, one more. Yeah. Okay. So I think we, I think I have a couple of dollars here that I brought down for you guys. Tootsie Rolls.
There you go. Joe, get it. You can get them over here.
Some more Tootsie Roll purchases up there as well. There you go. I'm gonna take them.
There you go. You have one there? There you go. Oh, I'm okay. I'm okay.
Okay.
There you go. Joe, get it. You can get them over here.
Some more Tootsie Roll purchases up there as well. There you go. I'm gonna take them.
There you go. You have one there? There you go. Thank you. Oh, I'm okay. I'm okay.
Okay. Okay. So back to this part of our meeting, we're gonna go to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the Clerk's Secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have 10 consent items this evening, and I have three pulled from the public. I have C3, C4, and C8 that are pulled from the public, and I have a lot of speakers tonight, so we're gonna limit our speakers to two minutes, if that's okay with everybody. Okay. So with that, we will go, I entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, so please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So with that...
I'm sorry, would you like a report from the staff, or would you like just to hear from the speaker?
Just a minute, I was looking for my, rest of my agenda, so I can see what the item is. There it is. Right. Okay, so the C3 is accepting offer of dedication for Brookins Lane, so do you need a report? Do we need a reporter, or should we just leave the speaker?
Hear what the speaker says.
He'll hear what the speaker said. Okay, Matt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This was originally dedicated in 1975, so I guess I was just curious, what's, what's the update, or what's the story?
It was a question?
Well, this was originally dedicated in 1975, so I was just wondering what, what was the change to accept it now?
Maybe, yep.
Mr. Conley?
So, Mayor, this is a map that was adopted a long time ago, and we're going through the process of cleaning up some of our dedications and accepting those that were rejected and never formally accepted. Typically, we will reject public dedications at the time of an approval, and then once the improvements are built, we'll accept the dedication and it'll become a public facility. We have a lot of them that have not been taken care of over the years, and so we're in a process right now with our right-of-way folks to go through and clean those up as much as possible. This is one of them that was just missed a long time ago.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, and then continuing to C4, which is also a dedication, is that kind of like the same concept?
Wait, 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 we have to, have to continue our meeting, so do you want, I need a motion for C4, or for C3?
Second.
Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So move to C4, which is accepting previously rejected offers of dedication on a parcel map 18692.
Right, it's just kind of like the same concept we were just talking about, where some work has to be done first before the city incorporates it, because I can see some is accepted and some is not.
Yes, same thing.
Same.
Something that was done and then not formally accepted until now.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
I need a motion.
I'll move that we approve.
Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, the next one is item C8.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realize you have to vote one by one.
Let me introduce it, so they know what it is, so people know what the item is. This is, this is a purchase and sale agreement for 740 to 742 South Santa Fe Avenue.
What was the agreed-upon purchase amount?
What was the question? I can't hear you.
The agreed-upon purchase amount was the question, and it was $600,000.
The property has like, like an empty kind of dirt space to the left and a parking lot to the right and something like behind it. Does that include like that entire area?
Yes, that includes the entire area. The full parcel is a value of $600,000.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion.
That we approve.
A second? Okay, please cast your votes.
Madam Mayor, while we're voting, I just wanted to compliment the city staff on that item. I think we did an excellent job of negotiating and acquired the property very near what we might have had to use our eminent domain power and don't ever want to have to exercise that power.
Right.
But we needed this parcel for our improvements.
I think it's for the circle, for the next circle that's down there on Phase 3 of our Passo Santa Fe.
So I just wanted to compliment the development staff on an excellent negotiation and one that worked out in the favor of the city and, yeah, thank you very much.
Mrs. Kim Cruz, sitting next to Mr. Conley.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda, as a public hearing, we have one public hearing this evening. This is a public hearing to receive testimony on the 2018-19 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Public hearing is now open. Assistant City Manager Ellie Zimmerman will introduce the item.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you is a public hearing on this city's consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for HUD, and our Housing Programs Manager Amanda Lee will be providing the staff report.
Hi, good evening, council members. Tonight, the item before you is our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, or otherwise known as our CAPER. It's our one-time-a-year where we really get to boast of our amazing accomplishments that we do throughout the year with our service providers and also any capital improvements that we've done. As you know, the City of Vista receives annual Community Development Block Grant Funds, or CDBG, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As a recipient of the grant, HUD requires the city to prepare and submit an annual evaluation known as the CAPER. The CAPER provides the city an opportunity to evaluate its overall progress in carrying out its priorities and specific objectives identified in the city's five-year 2015-2019 consolidated plan and subsequent annual action plans. This CAPER summarizes the progress made in program year 2018, which covers the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. The CAPER requires the city to assess how CDBG funds are utilized to address priorities that have been identified in the city's consolidated plan, which are to provide emergency shelter, crime and delinquency prevention programs, support services for seniors, health services including mental health, emergency assistance, and to make improvements to the community parks, public facilities, and infrastructure. In fiscal year 2018-19, just over 4,200 Vista residents received social services provided through contracts and various nonprofit organizations, as you can see listed on this slide. A majority of those assist, oh, sorry, let me go back. In addition to assisting those with our nonprofits, the city also completed just over 1,600 linear feet of sidewalk that was in between Boba Link between Riceburg and East Drive. I encourage you all to go look at it, it is very, very beautiful. And we also continue to make improvements at the Gloria McClellan Adult Activity and Resource Center. A majority of those assisted with CDBG funds, just a little bit over 72%, are considered extremely low-income, which means that they make less than 30% of the area median income. So that just shows you that a majority of our funds are really targeting those who are at a deep poverty level. In addition, demographically, the race and ethnicity of persons assisted generally reflects the diversity of Vista. Vista's community demographic profile is comprised at 49% Hispanic, and you could see that here, those who are being assisted is just over, close to 60% of our Hispanic community. Per HUD guidelines, a 15-day review period is required. The CAPER has been available for review on the city's website and in the city's Clerk's office. At this time, there is no public comments have been received, and all public comments, if any, are made will be reflected in the CAPER prior to our submission to HUD on September 30th. This concludes our report, and we are available to answer any questions.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you very much for this report. And I see a lot of our service providers are here with us this evening, and I want to say thank you to all of you for what you are doing for our thousands of residents that you impact every single day for our community. You're all doing a great job, and we appreciate it very, very much. So thank you, thank you. With that, I would move that we approve, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the Performance and Evaluation Report and authorizing the submittal of this report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Councilmember Contreras?
I second that, but I do have a question. Under the goal of emergency assistance, the outcome says 245 Vista residents. Can you just give us a summary of what categorically would be considered emergency assistance, please?
Yeah, so that ranges, in that particular category, that's specifically to a couple of different organizations. One of them is Mama's Kitchen, which assists and provides emergencies, food, basic needs to those experiencing HIV or cancer. And those are for very low-income people who cannot, their medically, their doctor refers them to this program because they cannot actually go and attain food themselves, but they need the food to survive, so it's delivered to them. Another one is through our, with North County Lifeline. They work in conjunction with the VUSD School District to provide basic needs and case management services to students who are also at that poverty level. In addition is Alpha Project. Alpha Project has a community outreach, it's actually a homeless outreach program where they go out and they connect homeless individuals with other resources. They were able to, in the last year, house 15 homeless people that they located in Vista, and they were able to make other connections as well. So they are actually the ones that go down into the trenches and interview, and people put people into the system to really find out more causes. And those are the three organizations we work with.
Thank you so much. I have a motion, I have a second? A second, and a second, so seeing, and I have no speakers, so seeing that, I would ask you to please vote. That motion passes unanimously. That leads us to our next discussion item. There's three discussion items this evening, and the first... There's three discussion items this evening, and the first one is, D1 is a strategic plan to address homelessness. And our assistant, oh, she's already there. Assistant City Manager Ellie Zimmerman is going to introduce the item.
Thank you again, Mayor. Good evening. We're here to talk to you more about the Council High Priority Strategic Plan to Address Homelessness Issues in Vista. This is a follow-up meeting to the larger discussion we had on June 4th. This is the first of at least four meetings that we'll have on homelessness. Just to let you know what we're expecting for the format, Ms. Lee will be presenting an overview of some of the background of what got us to June 4th, the research we've done since then, and some funding source availability. I'm going to provide a little bit of information about statistics on homelessness. And then, we're going to turn it over to our consultants from HG Consulting, Ms. Heidi Gantwork and Ms. Julie Dubick, to go into the specifics of homelessness prevention and diversion. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lee to get started.
Good evening again. So the item before you, as Ms. Zimmerman mentioned, is to discuss prevention and diversion strategies for the creation of a strategic plan to address homelessness. We're bringing this item to you before you first, because recently, we were allocated one-time funds from the state of $250,000 strictly for prevention and diversion services. So, since those new funds are available, we wanted to go ahead and speak with you first about those services. At the end of the presentation, we are looking for direction on how you see the strategies that are presented before you. Before we go into any strategies, I want to quickly review the process that we've gone to up through today's date. As you know, in March 2018, the City Council identified a need to develop a strategic plan to address homelessness. Following the identification of that goal, staff immediately recognized the importance of creating a plan that was data-driven, based on best practices, and utilized all available resources. To accomplish this, we released a request for proposal and selected HG Consulting to assist with the development of the plan. Starting in the summer of 2018, the consultant met with each council member and various staff, including the Sheriff's Department, to better understand the city's goal and also to receive policy direction. They conducted two focus groups that were with members of the business community and faith-based organizations. In addition, the consultant and staff have been gathering various numerous data points, including strategies that work in other communities, how best to collaborate with various organizations and regions, and what funding resources are available. With concerning funding, since the dissolution of redevelopment, the city utilizes, as per our past report, CDBG funding to address homelessness. CDBG regulations allow us to utilize up to 15% of our annual allocation for emergency shelter or emergency services. Our funding for those services is about $140,000, between $100,000 to $140,000 over the last five years. Over the last five years, the city has contributed approximately $21,400 annually to Operation Hope and about $35,000 annually towards emergency assistance services. And as I mentioned before, this includes outreach and providing basic needs. We understand that CDBG funds alone cannot make a significant impact on homelessness and therefore are recommending to utilize affordable housing dollars to address homelessness. State regulations allow cities to allocate up to $250,000 annually towards homelessness. Traditionally, Vista has reserved affordable housing funds for the development of affordable housing. Since 2014, the city has financially assisted the development of 216 affordable units and set aside funding for an additional 96 units. Although the funding is limited, funding can assist with reducing and/or preventing homelessness. Another funding source available is Senate Bill 2. And the state in 2018 created a permanent funding source, which is the recording fee that can be used for housing and/or homelessness. We have felt the best need for, we'll receive annually about $350,000, and we feel it'd be best to allocate that towards homelessness for another funding source. Additionally, the state budget provides a one-time allocation, as I mentioned previously, of $250,000, and that's to all cities within Assembly District 76, which includes Vista. The funds can be used for prevention services, which is the focus on tonight's discussion. We were last before you in June. As you know, we provided you an overview of our work up to that date and discussed potential outcomes. Based on that discussion, the City Council directed staff to include the following outcomes in the strategic plan: prevent homelessness, improve quality of life, enhance community outreach legislative advocacy, and reduce homelessness. As I mentioned, tonight, we're going to be discussing the prevention of homelessness. On October 22nd, we'll be combining together improved quality of life, enhanced community outreach and education, legislative advocacy. And lastly, on November 12th, we'll be discussing the reduction of homelessness. Our hope is that we receive direction, and then we come back to you in December with a draft plan, and then we have a final plan at the beginning of next year. As you know, the matter is vast, and that is the reason why we have went ahead and divided it up into these particular categories. On June 4th, following the prevention, the following prevention strategies were presented to you, and staff directed us to bring back additional information related to rental and deposit assistance, rapid rehousing funds, and Housing First. After further review, we saw that Housing First really belongs more in the reduction of homelessness category, so we will be discussing that further on November 12th. Also, since June 4th, our consultants have done a fantastic job of really reaching out to our additional, to service providers. They reached out to them before, but really took into consideration the questions that you guys asked on June 4th, and remet with 10 service providers, have been interviewing the homeless community, have reached out to various jurisdictions, the sheriffs, the county, really to get a hold on what homelessness really looks like here in Vista, not just regionally, but also here in Vista.
So with that, I'm just going to touch briefly on one of the items that came up in our June discussion, which is trying to find out about some of the root causes of homelessness and how homelessness, why homelessness is occurring in the region nationally. It basically is pervasive throughout the country, so this isn't something that is just a Vista or San Diego region focus. I first wanted to mention that homelessness has been defined, at least by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, into categories. And homelessness is one of the four things, according to HUD, lacking a fixed, adequate nighttime residence, as someone who is at imminent risk of homelessness, unaccompanied youth under age 25, or families with children who haven't had permanent housing over the past 60 days, or have moved at least twice during that period and are expected to continue this pattern due to special needs or barriers. And finally, an individual or family that has fleeing domestic violence and has no other residence. So we do have a standard nationwide definition of what is homelessness, but the defining the why is significantly more difficult. There is no single common factor among all persons who are experiencing homelessness, but there are general commonalities that can be highlighted, and those include substance abuse, mental health issues, a lack of affordable housing, lack of adequate or stable income, and domestic violence. The United States Inter-Agency Council on Homelessness conducted a study in 2015 that examined data collected from assessments completed for more than 36,000 unsheltered people in 62 communities across the country. And the data showed that people experiencing unsheltered homelessness compared to those who were sheltered were more likely to be white or mixed-race males with a history of military service, incarceration, and/or foster care, who have lower levels of education, who have reported using drugs or alcohol, and who have had some level of treatment related to substance abuse and mental health. That's basically what you're seeing in our single-male population. As it relates to families experiencing homelessness, the driving factor in that category is a shortage of rental housing that is affordable to them. When people are paying too large of a share of their income for rent, even a minor crisis or setback, such as a reduction in work hours, or an unexpected event can be destabilizing and result in the loss of housing. A worker earning minimum wage in the United States would have to work nearly 127 hours per week to afford a modest two-bedroom rental home in most of the United States, and this is according to the National Low Income Housing Coalition. And additionally, a report from Los Angeles in 2017 on chronic homeless showed that half of all unsheltered chronically homeless adults and one-quarter of sheltered chronically homeless adults reported that they have been victims of domestic or intimate partner violence. And I want to close with some information on youth homelessness. An estimated 700,000 youth under 18 without a parent or guardian experience homelessness each year, according to the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty. Often, they are in this situation as a result of parental mental health issues, parental abuse or neglect, severe family conflict, or often being forced to leave a home after sharing that they may be pregnant or identify as LGBTQ+. There's no one cause of homelessness, and that's kind of the common factor, but, which means, in our mind, that there shouldn't be one solution to addressing it. And you'll see a number of those as we reach out to you over the course of the next few meetings. I mentioned already tonight that tonight's focus will be on homelessness prevention and diversion. These statistics are national and statewide, and in the next portion of the presentation, we'll be receiving some, you'll be receiving additional information that's specific to North County and those who are using shelters in North County. So at this time, I wanted to invite our consultants, they're here, Ms., I don't know who's going first, but Ms. Gantwork and Ms. Dubick to the podium. So for their portion of the presentation, they'll be providing an overview of why prevention and diversion is considered a best practice for addressing homelessness, review the strategies that staff is recommending, and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for welcoming us back again today on this important issue. So, when we put up the slide in terms of who is using North County shelters, you'll see from this data that the North County shelters are populated by the same population type and data that Ellie just referred to, in terms of individuals and families, domestic violence, and the like. This is self-reported data, but it covers over 1,000 people who have entered shelters over the last year in 2018 and 2019. What it doesn't show you is that in almost all cases, the shelters they went into are full, there are long waiting lists, so it doesn't tell you about additional need out there, but it does tell you that what the national statistics show are also being reflected in North County. So, moving on to what is prevention and diversion, and why are we talking about that again today? And I think that Amanda referred to really why we're talking about this again today, because the opportunity from the state was just handed to four North County cities of $250,000 on a pilot basis to use a program for prevention for one year. You will have opportunity, and Heidi is going to speak more on the details of programs that are listed, but it is a very interesting opportunity to do some pilot work in this Prevention and diversion, which you can see defined there, are not necessarily only for homeless, and, but they will cover homeless people, but they also end up being a little bit more focused on those who have hit the lack of income, lost a job, or lack of housing area, because these are people who are either not homeless yet and just about to be and can be prevented, or have just been homeless for a short period of time. And when you look at the numbers, the costs range from about $4,000 to $6,000 per family to deal with someone in a prevention or diversion capacity versus about $16,000 if you're a shelter and about $32,000 if you're ending up in transitional housing. So the concept that we can consider best practice, which is the use of the three agencies that deal most often with homelessness, is the importance of implementing these types of services, not only to help people, but because the cost differential is so significant when you prevent homelessness versus then having to deal with homelessness or moving even into chronic homelessness, which really this prevention diversion is not dealing with tonight. So, that is a best practice here. The funding that is available, again, we have a $250,000 state budget, which will be coming your way shortly, and you'll hear more about that from Heidi in just a minute. And then, the funding sources that Amanda has referred to are your SB2, your CDBG, and your Affordable Housing Fund, can also be used in various capacities for prevention and diversion. So, when we talk about doing these programs, there are funds that you have that are existing to be used here. We'll come back and return to this recommendation and get your opinions and some consensus on them after we've done some discussion on various options for prevention and diversion, and really confirm that we would like, that you, we as a city, you would like to have this element as part of your homeless master plan.
Good evening. I'm just going to talk a bit about this opportunity that has been presented since we last met, which is this $250,000 one-year allocation. There are four cities that will be receiving this, Encinitas, Oceanside, Carlsbad, and Vista. And it, as Julie said, it's to be used for prevention and diversion specifically. And it is a really exciting opportunity to pilot some of these best practices and to do the kind of really thoughtful assessment and evaluation to look at the outcomes. And looking at a HUD study from a few years ago, they surveyed about 2,300 family units and looked at them a year later and found that they were much more likely to remain in housing, much more likely to have a bump in income through these tools and techniques. And Julie talked about the range, that $4,000 to $6,000 is rapid rehousing. Sometimes, these grants can be as small as a few hundred or $1,000 and can help a family or an individual turn the corner and prevent them from entering that shelter system, at which point those costs start to accumulate. So some of the people that may be using these services may be people that are not severely mentally ill, which is more prevalent among chronically homeless, people who may, young people we've heard about who are kicked out of their homes because of an issue with their family. We've talked to a number of homeless people that ended up losing their housing because they were staying in a friend's apartment, they were staying with a relative, and that relative needed that space back, and they don't have the money for that security deposit. So, people who don't need the intensive services that a shelter might provide and who could be helped for a far less significant investment, that's who we're talking about here. You can see some of the range of things that are included here. We talked last time about rental assistance and security deposits. For many people who are struggling to get out of a friend or another relative's apartment, they just can't put the money together for that deposit. And we talked about landlords often charging two or three months' rent now, and so some help with that can get people into a more stable situation. Security deposits. Auto repairs can sometimes stop a person from going to work, at which point they can't make the rent, at which point they can't keep their job and keep their apartment. Utility assistance and arrears, right? Sometimes, people are in arrears on rent, they have to pay back rent or back utility because an emergency came up, sometimes help with that, and sometimes on a sliding scale or on a reduced schedule. So there may be a grant one month, and then it's less the month after that, less the month after that, until it goes down to zero. Self-sufficiency. Some of this money can go to support classes for financial literacy. In fact, many of the programs that CRC, who is the partner that is named in the state budget, they require financial literacy classes for participation in many of their programs and for receipt of these funds. Rapid rehousing, we talked about, and flex funds, having the flexibility to address the needs of these folks so that we can either keep them housed if they are at imminent risk of becoming homeless, or if they have become homeless for a very short period of time and have not officially entered the system. How do we keep them out of the shelter system, again, from those expensive interventions? And some of the questions that came up have been around how people are screened or how they become eligible, and we've done some research into that. And there's a pretty intensive screening that is done, there is an assessment, obviously there's self-reporting, but they also ask for income verification, for bank statements. There's a number of methods that all of the partners that do this sort of work ask for in order to assess whether someone is eligible and a reasonable person to bring into this program. In addition, they're using the countywide community information In addition, they're using the countywide community information database so that they can look to see if somebody's applying for services in Vista, but the same services in Oceanside, and then also the same services in Carlsbad, the system picks that up, so that we can prevent that kind of double-dipping, so to speak. Everyone who comes in is required to put together a self-sufficiency plan of action, and there are financial stability, food security, employment, and housing goals. They go through case management, and they're assessed at various periods throughout, including, I believe, six months and a year out, and then also at 13 months. And why 13 months? Because that's when that one-year lease is up, and are they still in housing 13 months later? Have they managed to stay in housing a second year? So those are some of the ways in which there's an assessment. There is really, I think, an opportunity here to try these programs in Vista and really look hard at the data, because there is so much data collection being done here. Are they successful? And a year from now, have people been prevented from becoming homeless? And again, we're following them for over a year, and if so, can we free up some of those shelter beds for maybe people who are in more need of those shelter beds? So it helps a lot of people sort of down the entire trajectory of people dealing with some of these challenges. So that is what we're talking about. It also, one of the real goals with prevention and diversion also is that it keeps people connected to their community. It keeps people connected to friends and family, to things that are familiar, and that studies show can have an impact on mental health as well. That if you are, you know, all of a sudden in some environment that is completely new and nothing is familiar, and you have no people you know, that that can be, you know, situationally, cause depression, other mental health issues. So there are real benefits to keeping people in their communities and connected to people. And again, because of this opportunity, we can really try these things and really come back in a year and say, is this working? Which elements are the most successful? What's keeping people in their homes? And what do we really know about it? And I think pushing for that evaluation and assessment component is key to this effort. So that is, so I want to come back then to the recommendation, given that. And the recommendation is basically that this be included, and that prevention and diversion, and that financial assistance, that piece of financial assistance through this $250,000 allocation be included as a component. Now, as you know, CRC is going to be involved with this. The details of this, I think you all know, are being worked out. This may happen quickly, but there's still work to be done to really understand who the partners on the ground will be, what the relationship between the city will be, but we believe that the opportunity is significant with this influx of funds for this year. And if there are things that really work and are really effective, can include them on an ongoing basis going forward. So I guess I'm looking for acknowledgement, head nods. Do we want to include this as an item in the plan, the master plan going forward?
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you.
Yep.
Absolutely. This funding coming to our cities, the four of us, $250,000 each, I think this is a really great start for our master plan and for an action plan, which is what we really need and what we really want, is an action plan, not just a lot of talk, not just a lot of meetings, but actually being able to identify a problem and deal with the problem and help our community and help our residents. So I absolutely am in favor of adding this to our master plan and allocating the funding to pilot a prevention and diversion program in collaboration with the CRC. I did work with them a long time ago in their domestic violence clinic, and am familiar with a lot of the work that they have done over the years, and I'm sure that we'll be able to work well with them and them with us. I know we don't, I don't think we have any particular programs that we work in concert with CRC at this time.
No, not right now.
Okay, I didn't think so, but I'm excited for this. I'm not excited about the problem. Having this issue nowadays, in 2019, to be dealing with homelessness to the magnitude that we are is unconscionable and very sad that as a society it has come to this. But I'm very glad that we are looking at this, that we are working on this, and that we will have these funding, that we will have additional partnerships for our citizens. So thank you for that. And if you need a motion, do you need a motion for this?
You know, this is kind of strange, because I have speakers, I have eight speakers, and we're...
Mayor, if I could recommend, we are looking for your direction. I don't think we need a formal motion on any of the items at this time. If there's consensus to either move forward or not, and we can tell that, we'll bring it back in the draft plan.
Okay.
Because we have one more component we wanted to identify in terms of strategies...
Right, that was my...
And then the speakers, we could either have Heidi continue, and then hear the speakers, and then more discussion with that.
Well, it's up to the council. Usually, we take speakers, and then we discuss it, you know, after we listen to them. So that's why I was questioning, because I know we have another part of the plan to go yet.
That's fine.
Sorry, I thought you called on me.
I did, because you... Okay, let's finish your presentation, then we'll have the discussion, okay?
Okay.
Is that, okay, so we'll just continue.
Okay, okay, great. The last piece I would add to that, as I move on, and it ties into the next piece we're going to discuss, is that there is also great potential for collaboration and working between these cities. We talked a lot in our last meeting about the need for that kind of collaboration, having these four cities learning from each other, sharing information, and supporting one another, there's exciting potential there as well. So all in all, a good thing. The next thing we're going to talk about is a home share program, and this was not something that we discussed in any detail the last time we were here, but it did come up in our discussion. Was there a way to connect people who needed a place to live with people who had extra rooms or were struggling financially in some way? And so we've looked at that, and there are programs out there for home sharing. And so we are recommending that we allocate, and this is outside of that $250,000, we'll talk about that in a moment, but that we allocate some funding to support a home share component. And just to review real quickly, the typical way in which people find housing and home share, so to speak, is a landlord owns a home, or an apartment, or a building, and they rent out the entire space or some portion of that space to people who want to live in that space. With a home sharing program, the way that we're looking at it, you're still connecting people who own the property to people who want to rent it or to use that space, but there's a coordinator working, and so there is a prevention element of this, where you are bringing people together who might be at risk at homelessness. There is a screening and an intake, there's conflict resolution, there's also navigation potentially to other services, all of those, and also a matching process, right? This is not just putting a room for rent on Craigslist and hope the person's okay. There is a pretty significant intake process, a vetting process, a matching process, and some people who are not appropriate for this will get screened out to other sorts of services. So that's what we're talking about here. And so you can see, there's a number of things that are involved. You have someone looking for a place to live, that may be an older person, it may be a younger person. You have someone who has a home. Oftentimes, we have seen that there are older folks who maybe have space and can't keep up the cost of their home or their apartment, and they may also need help, they may need support with errands or chores. And there's a younger person or somebody who is needing that space and can't afford their own place can come in and live there, and it's a mutually beneficial arrangement. It's not just financial, it can often be about support around, you know, in that facility. So the home share, I'm sorry, if you can just go back for one second, Amanda. So the home share provider is also looking, is doing outreach to bring people into the program, not just home seekers, but also people who might be looking for someone to help them in their home, both support them financially and also with those chores. And if there are issues, if there are conflicts that need resolved, you have that person who is helping to do that work. Okay. So benefits, we've talked about, obviously, it decreases the rent burden on both the person who is sharing the home, but also the owner or the, you know, the person who is on the lease. It decreases isolation. There are a number of elder programs where people are living with elderly folks, and isolation can be a huge issue for some of these folks. And so this creates more community, connects people to the world. There can be assistance with childcare, you know, if somebody has children and needs that help, and someone is willing to do that, you know, they can have them in safety. And again, we talked about this with prevention and diversion, that connection to community so that people don't have to leave who they know, they can stay connected to friends, family, they can stay nearby, that also has significant psychological and financial benefits for the city, it helps everybody. So those are the benefits of the program. So again, we talked about, this would be coming out of the other sources that we have discussed, so this would be something that we would allocate funding for, and we'll put that in the final budget, and we're going to talk about a little bit of a range here that this might go. You've got your Affordable Housing Fund, the SB2, and the CDBG funds, that are all potential sources for what we're suggesting here.
And what we've discussed, and in the agenda report, is there are local cities nearby that would be interested in partnering with the city to have a regional home share provider go in and a collaborative RFP to identify that service provider, which would then significantly decrease the cost for all of us to, and then help us when we're trying to match people potentially just, you know, between Vista and San Marcos service and Oceanside, if your match is in a different location.
Right, and what I was going to say is, you know, the range, if we were to hire a coordinator for, a home share coordinator for the city, it could run you somewhere on the order of $50,000. It could be as low as $10,000 with a shared coordinator who worked across cities. There's also benefits because it expands the range of matches. And there is a program now working with, for elderly folks in particular, just so we're aware, they've been in existence about 20 years, and they've matched 800 elderly folks with people in their homes, and the majority of those matches are lasting five years or more. So it's a pretty sustainable model that's working in San Diego and Poway, and it's new in Carlsbad. So that's one of the models, it's not necessarily limited to elderly folks, but that is one of the models that we're looking at. So then, I think, the recommendation.
The recommendation on this one would be to, again, include a home share program into the strategic plan draft. Those are the two major components that we wanted to identify under prevention and diversion. So this completes the bulk of our presentation, and if you want to stop for questions or public comment, we're available.
Okay. And I'd like to take the speakers first, if that's okay. Right, okay, so we're going to take the speakers first, and so I have quite a few, so if you will call one, and the other two will line up over here, that will help us, and you have two minutes. And we're focusing tonight on prevention, so if you could try and focus your comments on the prevention part of the homeless. So we'll start with Thomas Mellon, followed by Don Stumpf, followed by Paul Webster. Tom Mellon, is Tom Mellon? Not here. Okay, well, just, I'll hold that, and then if he comes, is he, oh, he's here, okay, here he comes. Okay.
My name's Aaron Mellon, Thomas. Two things I'd like to address on this subject is the decriminalization of homeless people. People get arrested, they also get tickets all the time. How are they supposed to pay for those tickets? I'm talking illegal lodging, stuff like that. You can still criminalize them if they're doing illegal activity, but just to be homeless, it's kind of hard. Second, I think something that would help out and benefit the city of Vista as well is, I agree with these ladies on a lot of things, but give people a job. Hire homeless people to do simple tasks, take out garbage, like for the city, have them clean stuff up, you know? And then also, maybe a training program would help out as well. Re-educate people, get them a new skill and trade that would directly benefit the city. Have them do tasks, help them learn how to build low-income housing for people. I know it's short, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Don Stumpf, followed by Paul Webster, followed by Charity Singleton.
Good evening to the council. The presenters did a great job of talking about how homelessness has many faces, and we need as many different types of interventions to deal with homelessness as there are kind of facets of the problem. North County Lifeline is currently operating homeless service, prevention and diversion services through our youth drop-in center for youth ages 15 to 25. We're right here in Vista, and we are partnering with Just in Time for Foster Youth with the drop-in center. Since we opened, in April, we're seeing about one to four homeless kids a day, and that doesn't include the former foster kids that are coming in for services. And so so far, we've already seen 84 young people who have dropped into the center. Sometimes what we're finding out is the kids need mediation and family reunification. There's been conflict, and we, through therapeutic interventions, can get them back together. What we're mostly seeing is that they're sleeping on the street, they're couch surfing, they've been thrown out of their home, or they are escaping abusive family relationships, and because they're teenagers, they can run. And so what we found is that they are homeless, and many of the couch surfing arrangements are staying with a friend's family, they're staying with a group of kids that have an apartment. And so what we're doing through our prevention and diversion services, a story is one of the kids is sort of living paycheck to paycheck in an apartment with a friend. His car broke down, and his decision that month was, do I pay rent or do I fix the car? And he was that close to not being able to stay in the apartment, so we helped him fix the car, and therefore, he could continue paying the rent. The short-term problem was solved, and he's not homeless today. Another young woman brought in her friend. They had both been couch surfing significantly for two years. One had escaped a family violence situation, and what we were able to do with them, because they both ended up getting jobs at Sprint, we were able to help them get an apartment and pay their first and security deposit. And one of the women was screened for sex trafficking, and we were able to connect her into services.
Thanks, Don, sorry.
Thank you.
Paul Webster, followed by Charity Singleton, followed by Michael Joseph.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for bringing up this item. I'd like to submit two independent evaluations on rapid rehousing. Whoops, one from Homestretch Northern Virginia, and the other from the Washington Legal Clinic for Homelessness. Both identify significant challenges for families in rapid rehousing programs that often leave families worse off in returning to homelessness. Just some quick statistics that both of these evaluations cite, 50% of families in the program, in rapid rehousing program, were behind in rent, 75% were behind on utility bills, and 45% were in eviction court. Most participants in rapid rehousing programs fail because they're unable to sustain rental rates that are far out of reach for low-wage earners and people without employment histories. In the words of one rapid rehousing client, "Instead of helping me get out of the cycle of poverty, they just delayed it." As the council considers strategies to address homelessness, I would suggest that instead of focusing on the symptoms, housing, that you would focus on the indicators and services that actually help people escape poverty, such as reducing debt to rebuild finances and enable economic freedom, increasing incomes to ensure long-term ability to afford housing themselves, and reducing recidivism and relapse for individuals with history of incarceration and addiction. These are not quick fixes or panaceas. They stand in sharp contrast to the clamor to transfer wealth from homeowners, businesses, and employees to governments and unelected regional boards who promise to end homelessness by providing housing, yet turn a blind eye to what causes the homelessness in the first place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Charity Singleton, followed by Michael Joseph, followed by Anthony White.
Mayor Ritter, councilmembers, deputy mayor, I want to say thank you for allowing me to stand up here with you today. I am new to Operation Home North County, and prevention and intervention is on our minds every day. When we see families and single women, they're already homeless, they're already struggling. And so for us, and Heidi said it great, thank you, we have an intake process that does just what she is saying. We have a program called Steps to Independence that walks them through the steps of gaining financial literacy, understanding what they're missing, and reaching out to our community. One of the things that we really want to focus on going in prevention is we're looking to the future. What are our children seeing and doing? What are these children that are coming into our shelter that have been suffering just with their parents as well, or it may be an aunt or a grandparent? We don't define family. They have suffered trauma. And when they come in, our job is to first stabilize and then get them to a place to thrive. Our programs are really focused... Our programs are really focused now on doing learning outcomes. What can we do to support our children and our teens to get them to break the cycle of homelessness and also to low income through education? One of the programs that we want to put in place that we're looking to do is to create a scholarship fund for our teens and any alumni teen that has come through our program to offer them a higher education scholarship for them. Prevention is something we are looking to our future and our teens and our children. And so these funds that are coming into our city, that you as Vista has supported us and we know that you will support us in the future, we are so grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Joseph, followed by Anthony White, followed by Katie Melendez.
I owe this to God Almighty and my community here in Vista. Greetings. My name is Michael and have been a homeless U.S. Army veteran with schizophrenia. I have been homeless twice, once in Santa Cruz and once in North County San Diego. From this vantage point, I have seen resources and people put in action in two different regions. These are my conclusions. One, North County hospitals and health centers need more funding to staff one-stop-shop social workers. Once given a diagnosis, the mental health homeless patient can meet with a social worker specifically assigned to them. From that point, the social worker helps them get Social Security, Medicare, and housing. Two, hospitals need to give their mental health patients classes on how to identify the symptoms of their illness and how to correct the human experience. Three, broader training to sheriffs about how to identify symptoms of mental illness in a detainee so they can be taken to the hospital instead of jail. Four, homeless shelters have down hours usually between 6:30 a.m. and 5:30 p.m. During that time, there is not much to keep oneself occupied. Shelters could have all volunteer graffiti and trash cleanup crews taken out by a van, driver, and all the necessary materials. The volunteers could be given a certificate for their endeavors which they could show to potential employers. Thank you for your time and efforts. May wisdom find each one of you. Michael Joseph.
Thank you, Michael. Anthony White, followed by Katie Melendez. Oh, followed by Francis Jolmer.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Anthony White. I'm a North County resident. I've been in Vista for the past three years. I've been in North County since 2011. When I came out to California after joining the Marine Corps. Shortly after leaving the Marine Corps in 2014, I found myself homeless in North County for about eight months, living in my pickup truck. One of the most challenging times of my life. Going through that experience kind of shaped the way I was going to live my life from there on out. For the past year, with my, at Palomar College, I've actually been an advocate for addressing student homelessness, seeing as during the time that I was homeless, I was actively pursuing an education and found that while there's many resources on campus for students who are trying to seek themselves, to better themselves, there's very few to help them get into, you know, a situation where they can be sustainably housed. But furthermore, what I would like to address specifically tonight in prevention is the veteran population we have in North County. We have a significant portion of our homeless population is consisting of veterans. What I would suggest is working with the leaders on Camp Pendleton for those Marines, sailors who are transitioning out of the military. We already have mandatory classes that we have to take, you know, write a resume, how to, you know, interview skills and so on. But I think it would be extremely important for those folks to know that there are resources available if they don't have a solid plan. And while I did think at the time that I had a solid plan to be able to take care of myself and sustain myself, pride got in the way. As it most often does with a lot of members of the military, they think that they can take care of themselves. But one situation can lead to another, which can lead ultimately to somebody being homeless. So my recommendation would be to help the veterans who have helped us so much and work with the leaders on Camp Pendleton to offer, you know, classes or resources that are available, not just to the general populace, but to veterans, specifically citing institutions such as North County Veteran Services here in North County. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Melendez, followed by Francis Dummler.
Good evening, council members and Madam Mayor. I'm really excited that this is coming up on the agenda. I'm a Vista native and a social worker here in Vista. And I implement some of the rapid rehousing programming that has been discussed tonight and I think it can be really useful to low-income families that are just having a hard time putting together that deposit or, you know, are at risk of homelessness and eviction because they've lost their job. So I think that those rapid rehousing dollars are very important. And as a social worker, I see all the time how eviction can really affect someone. It goes on your record for a very long time and it can make it really hard to gain stable housing in the future. So any way that we can prevent that and stop the cycle is really awesome. I've also identified another problem. So financial strain isn't the only cause of eviction. I also, in my role as a social worker, see a lot of landlord abuse and harassment of their tenants. Specifically, when they, the tenants report uninhabitable conditions or if they report other abuses or problems within the property. I have seen many instances of retaliation where landlords are not held accountable and they harass and threaten the tenants and then eventually potentially issue them an eviction notice. There's also instances where a tenant will be evicted because the landlord wants a different tenant on the property, even if the tenant does have, say, a month-to-month lease and has been paying on time. One client that I was working with had her rent increased from $1,400 to $2,400 after she had an interpersonal conflict with the landlord. So if there's any way we can improve tenant protections, that would also reduce evictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Francis?
Good evening. I'd like to make two short points. First, I want to thank and congratulate the staff from the city and the consultants for a tremendous job in having such concise information that is very deep. Because of that, I suggest that the entire transcript of tapes and the entire PowerPoint presentations be put on the website for any citizen to download if so they wish. I think this material has to be evaluated by us, the citizens, carefully to make informed decisions later on, as when the action plan starts evolving. And my second request is, particularly since there are going to be several cities involved, the ability to actually prospectively study what the impact of this action plan is requires strict scientific rigor as done in social sciences in order to be able to evaluate things properly. Namely, a paradigm has to be built beforehand with all the outcomes to be evaluated, with all the variables that are going to be studied, and then it is to be followed. I think if we start adding things or say, well, why don't we evaluate this instead of that? Or let's change this variable for that one, then at the end of the day, you may have a description of what happened, but it's going to be very hard to understand which components had a real impact at the end point. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. He's our last speaker and so I'll go to the council. And Councilmember Rigby, I left your name on there because we had more to go and I didn't know if you wanted to go ahead and talk again or do you want?
If I might continue.
Can you continue, sorry?
That's okay, thank you. So to answer your question, yes, on the use of that. I did have a question for, I don't know to whom I should direct the question, regarding the home share program. And I understand that it is already in the works in other areas and communities, that it's being very successful. I was wondering, what percentage of our homeless population do we anticipate would qualify or be good candidates for the home share program?
I'm not sure that we can give you an exact data statistic on that, but I would say that what we're looking at here are people who aren't yet homeless. So they would be people who are trying to divert or prevent from becoming homeless. Ms. Lee has some stats from Santa Clara County where some of their programs were diverting hundreds of people from homeless systems based on support services like this. But I don't think we can give you a data point. The point that Heidi brought up, about 800 people being matched within the elder care, elder help, elder share program, excuse me, is a data point for San Diego and for Poway, but there's nothing yet for Vista. I would also point out that when we're talking about a home share program, we wouldn't be limiting it to a senior population, so we're hoping to hit a broader base of people who are in need on both sides. And if, I could also just add too, if we were looking more at the currently homeless population, we would need to look at additional funding sources to help stabilize those people into housing. So it would be more intensive wraparound services where, at this particular time, with the $50,000 to $10,000 to $50,000 range for a home share coordinator, that's more for the prevention where they haven't yet gone through the trauma. I mean, they definitely trauma, but the intense trauma care that a homeless person would have. That's definitely down the line and that those programs are working in other places, but just, that's not what we're looking at this particular time.
Oh, okay. The other comment that I had goes back to homeless veterans. And when I'm out talking to some of our homeless population that I sit with and talk to and also attending and participating in the veteran stand-down that we have here in North County every year, I am surprised by the number of veterans who are homeless. And I do know that the VA has programs for our veterans. And I'm assuming that our homeless master plan, one of the components, would be working closely in concert with the VA and their programs for our veteran community.
Yes, and also, we'll actually be discussing a little bit more towards those programs when we, on November 12th, when we discuss the reduction of homelessness. We've done much research on that and definitely we will bring you back more comprehensive information at that time.
Okay. I thought that that would be a good, also, topic for prevention and diversion in trying to capture those two last questions that I had regarding, you know, the home share and the veterans. But that's okay, we'll talk about it when you're ready to talk about it. But I'm just saying I would like to see that component spelled out in our master plan because I think it's important, especially with the percentage of homeless veterans that we have or potential homeless veterans that are out there. And then, when we were having this conversation, I guess it was June 4th, we've had a couple of conversations on this. And I was talking about the point-in-time count that was done back in January. And we got the report from it and we were talking about it. It was really very, if I remember correctly, very 30,000-foot look at Vista and the homeless population here. And I had asked if there was any way to get some numbers to really identify the populations and the different demographics that we are dealing with. And I haven't heard anything back from anybody, so I won't ask any particular questions on that right now, but I'm still looking for that information, if it's possible that we can get some.
And if I could quickly just, so we did reach out to the Regional Task Force and this was the first year that they did not do the in-depth review to release that information for the cities. So in next year's coming point-in-time count, we will see more data, but unfortunately, they did not have those particulars for us at this time. But when, on November 12th, we do have a further look into homelessness regionally that will provide a little bit more depth to what you're looking for.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras?
Definitely, you know, the $250,000 that we're receiving from the state or, I guess we could think about it as getting money back that we've put in. But we definitely have to accept those funds. It is a really positive component to looking at this whole plan, right? I mean, that's $250,000, so that's a good amount. First, I, on page two of the Agenda Report, about four paragraphs down, one of the prevention/diverse services outlined is utility assistance. I just wanted to throw a plug in, in the future, when, as a council, we discuss community choice energy, if that's a possible point that we can discuss at that time as well. So, just wanted to throw that out there. Now, looking at the home share program, I think that sounds fantastic. It seems like a great way to make our dollars really stretch. But I do have a question regarding the coordinator. So, would the coordinator also be, function as a case manager? Or would a case manager not be necessary within the home share program? And if a case manager is necessary, about, you know, approximately, how much would that cost as well?
Well, the, it would be conflict resolution is what the services would be providing. So wouldn't it be mental health services or a social worker in that need? But it would be a case manager and are you having conflict with your roommate? Maybe they're not the best fit, let's go ahead and match you to some other location in assist with like moving or the rental agreements. We haven't typically wraparound services for full-on case management where you're dealing with mental health issues or trauma-induced care would dramatically increase the cost. You would be needing more of a social worker on hand to handle those aspects and that would probably range more to the fact of about $80,000 to $90,000.
Okay. And mediation services, do we have a few examples of whether or not these mediations are coming, the outcome is a good one for those who have gone through mediation? I don't know if there's any kind of data available, which then also goes to question about data collection and methodology used with the home share program. So we can be able to assess, you know, different levels of progress, but, so it's kind of like all-encompassing under that component of data. But do we have examples or some kind of numeric set that we can look at that says, okay, X amount of people in these other home shares or elder share have gone through mediation and there's been X outcome? Is there a way for us to see that?
The data that we have is mostly on, well, the data that we have is the success of the program and how long people are actually staying within the people that they're matched with to the housing and how many people are actually matched. It didn't go into, the data we have didn't go into, out of those many people, these many people needed conflict resolution. But I'm sure that's information that we can go ahead and request and see if it's something we can obtain.
Yeah, I would love to see that data and if it's not currently being collected, if we were to move forward with some kind of home share program, I definitely would like to see a data collection on different points like that. You know, there's so many different components, so just to be able to measure how successful different parts of the home share program are. I think it's also really exciting that we could divide this cost amongst a few cities to reduce the amount that we're going to pay for the coordinator if we were to move forward as a council with home share. Let's see here. Now, as far as the one-time funds for prevention/divation, if we're looking at, you know, between 4K to 6K, so are we looking for the $250,000 to be allocated for one year and we're going to spend the entire $250,000? Or if there's leftover, does that roll over or are those details being kind of worked out right now?
Those details are still being worked out. We're in conversations with the CRC and we're in communication with the Assemblymember's Office, but the funds are coming from Housing and Community Development Department. The CRC is trying to coordinate what would be a reasonable way to manage programs in all four cities. We don't know exactly what would happen. What we all do know is that when the funding is there, we want to be ready to implement as successful a program as possible because maybe it turns into two years of funding.
or longer if we're showing success. And if we're not showing success, then we know that these weren't the best places to invest those kinds of funds and we'll maybe look to something else. But we really have no detail, other than what was in the line item budget, which says prevention/diversion.
Okay.
We will bring that, I just want to say, we will bring that back to the city council. The acceptance of $250,000 into our budget will require council action. So once you, we know, you'll know.
Awesome. And, you know, just to belabor the point a little bit more, with this pilot program, data collection, as has been mentioned by some of my colleagues, you know, it's just there's, there's no good way to compare data between these different entities because it's kind of all over the place, so there's no good baseline. So, you know, if we run a pilot program here, I want to make sure that we're, one, you know, keeping in mind privacy, but two, really able to collect data that is going to help us or future councils be able to make decisions, you know, better. If this, if another funding source were to come forward or, you know, if this funding source dries up, but we see a lot of success, then, you know, we could perhaps use some of the other funding to carry this program forward. So, and just want to make sure I belabor the point that data collection is going to be extremely important because that's the only way that we can actually measure progress. And it's important for the public too, to be able to see that their dollars are being utilized to their maximum potential. Outside of that, you know, I want to thank all the speakers that came forward. You all brought up some really, really good points. One of the, the points that, that the first gentleman made about a jobs program within the city, although that was a really creative strategy perhaps, I don't know if that's something that we're able to do, but I wrote that down on here because I thought it was really interesting perspective to have. But I'll go ahead and turn it over to my colleagues here, but this is really exciting. So please, data like crazy because we want to be able to measure successes or, you know, say, you know, this didn't work out and we don't want to waste the public's money on this, we'd rather focus it in some other areas. So just want to harp on that a little bit longer, but definitely let's accept this 250K.
Councilmember Green.
All right. First of all, thanks for breaking this down into three meetings so we didn't have to pinch tent and move into this building. In regards to preventing homelessness, it sounds like there's two different areas you'd like us to look at, financial assistance and the home share program. In regards to the financial assistance, I'm a huge fan of everything. I did have two questions. Number one has to do with a social worker assignment and like wraparound services for the people that we're helping. I heard our consultants mention that we were going to have some type of employee, it could cost 10 grand a year, 20 grand a year, depending on their workload and case management or whatever. I'm just kind of wondering exactly what that entails support-wise for the applicant or client, I guess?
So in terms of, there's two different things. For the home share.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the.
The financial assistance.
Yeah, for now.
So the financial assistance, the way that works is that would be coordinated through existing organizations.
Okay.
Right? So the city's not going to hire a person who's going to be staffed by the city. And these folks have full-time case managers. So everybody who comes in after that intake is assigned a case manager at one of these organizations who follows through with them on their self-sufficiency plan.
Okay. And one of the speakers mentioned, and I think that it was Paul Webster from Solutions for Change, about the rapid rehousing, that when we put them in housing that they can't afford and they just get back behind on the rent. And that was kind of my thing is if we're going to allocate money towards rapid rehousing, are we going to make sure that the, you know, place that we put them in isn't going to put them in the same situation financially as before?
Right.
That's some type of work I would assume we do before we allocate those funds, right?
So that's part of the self-sufficiency plan and they're being followed on a regular basis by a case manager who's looking at their income, looking at their bank statements, working with them to make sure they can ensure the rent. And I appreciate Paul Webster's bringing those studies forward. You know, there's a lot of studies on this. The one that I was reading to you before looked at about 15 different cities. And so there is some evidence that people do stay in those homes. It's obviously not always the case. But I think what the organizations that we're talking about, in particular CRC and folks like North County Lifeline are looking at is pretty intensive case management and follow-through, to your point, to track that data, but also to help those people to avoid that, you know, 12-month period when they fall off that cliff.
Gotcha. And then my only other question while I have you up here is when the speaker spoke about tenant protections. And I'm wondering if in anywhere our financial assistance program has any type of legal help? I know we mentioned mediation arbitration per se, but is there actually a, you know, licensed attorney that we're going to allocate funds for within this program?
So the city of Vista already contracts with Legal Aid of San Diego to provide landlord tenant mediation services and tenant protections. If any renter in the city of Vista is concerned about something happening in their rental unit, they can utilize the services of Legal Aid through the city's CDBG funding source.
Contact our mandalay here to have them fight for them.
The programs such as landlord assistance aren't involved in this prevention component, but we do have that service available already and will continue.
Perfect. That is awesome. Thank you. That's all I had on that. And then I am a fan of the home share program. I think that it will help especially with, you know, not only the veteran population, but also we have, you know, a lot of colleges locally here and college kids, I think, that could really help, you know, some of our elderly and disabled that may need, you know, help around the house or however you're going to figure it out. So I think finding a good coordinator to match and find a perfect fit is a really good idea. So these two areas of preventing homelessness, I think, is a great start. I think it's amazing that the city of Vista is going to be able to provide these services to people. As a kid who was raised by a single mom who made 1,000 bucks a month, it was tough. And knowing that when we got that red, you know, little notice on our front door that we might have somebody to help us get out of that jam when we had to pick, do we keep the lights on or do we pay the rent? And sometimes it was pay the rent and we used candles until we could pay the light. So having a situation where the city would actually step in and help our residents who are actually working hard to take care of their families is amazing. So thanks for bringing this forward. I definitely approve of both aspects.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Well, I also want to say thank you for your good work on this and for a lot of good suggestions. With regard to the home share program, my initial impression was this could be a good opportunity for perhaps a senior citizen who needed some additional income, maybe to share their home with another senior citizen who needed an affordable place to live. I like the idea of assisting people with finding efficiencies in their lives. I also thought it was a great idea, maybe some of these seniors, you know, would enjoy having somebody else to live with if they've come to a place in their life where they're alone. And that could potentially be, I could also see, you know, perhaps some Marines or servicemen, you know, finding assistance, you know, finding a roommate. You know, I've lived with roommates when I was in college, when I was just out of college. You know, I don't know how I would have been able to afford a place of my own if not, you know, I found a friend. Sometimes it worked well, sometimes it didn't. I think for those folks who are leery, particularly about inviting a stranger in, you know, the one time that I lived with a stranger was arranged through one of the universities I attended. And I probably would not have, I can't imagine I would ever want to invite a stranger, a perfect stranger, to live in my home. It's just too scary. So, you know, potentially the idea of assisting and providing, you know, I would hope that there would be a regular check-in opportunity where they're visiting with both parties to make sure it's working well. You know, we talk constantly about affordability. One of the ways that we could really impact affordability is to help people efficiently use the housing that we have now rather than constantly, and we could create a lot more opportunities that way. The quarter million dollars for, that's coming through the state, is that come with the mandate that those funds be used for grants? Or do we have some latitude with how we might use it to prevent homelessness?
We don't know yet. It says the funds are to be used in coordination with the CRC for prevention and diversion programs.
I heard us refer to this as a pilot project. I also heard Lifeline say they're doing some of it now. We heard from a social worker here in our community that said she's involved with administering some of this. So, you know, I have, have had a single meeting with staff on this particular subject of these grants, the rapid rehousing. And I, you know, I do have to express some concerns because as much as it sounds like a phenomenal idea, I'm not yet aware of the science. And I would agree with the Commissioner Doomer who said, you know, if, particularly if this is a pilot, we need to have well-defined scientific standards. In fact, you know, one of the questions I wrote down is who's the data scientist? Who's the academic that's going to look at this with a fair mind and say, is this really helping people? Is this the best use of these dollars? You know, one of the problems is you cannot predict who is going to become homeless. That is impossible unless you have a crystal ball. So then you have to say, okay, what are some predictive factors that might come in advance of somebody being homeless? Well, probably a lot of individuals are going to share or have some of those markers and they may not actually be imminently homeless. And so, you know, there is a question about can we accurately identify the correct community or the people that are most genuinely in need and the people who are most likely not to have homelessness delayed but actually cured through this assistance. It's one of the reasons that I really highlighted in our meeting, and I want to highlight it again tonight, the need for real financial literacy efforts. Because for many folks, the lack of savings, the misuse of credit, and generally, and for many people, the lack of a budget. These are simple things, but if you're never taught, and many people are not taught these things, then it can be difficult to manage your money. So I think it's incredibly important that we have a real focus on financial literacy training. And in fact, I would prefer to expand because, I mean, I go back to the principle of giving a man a fish or teaching him to fish. The financial literacy education for at-risk populations should be more akin to teaching people to fish and giving them lifelong skills to be problem solvers in their own lives and to be good planners and good stewards of their own resources. It's not my position that there's not a place for this program, but I do want to hear more about it. I'd like to better understand whether we're piloting something or whether there's a lot of empirical evidence. What I'm hearing so far seems to be analogies. And, you know, I mean, what's required in the scientific sense is to have a control population, which would probably be of all the people that you identify as worthy, you'd have to decline some portion of them to create a control group. With, I was taught in the seventh grade without a control group, there's no way to compare the testing of your hypothesis. And I think it is important. I mean, these are dollars that somebody worked hard for and there are other people who need them. But if we're going to, you know, expand a welfare program, then we should be able to genuinely offer empirical evidence that it's a successful program that diminishes the long-term need for services for individuals. I think we owe that duty to the taxpayers. And I think we owe that duty, I mean, I forgot who it was that said, you know, it often just delays. We don't want to delay a problem for someone, we want to help them solve it. So I think that's incredibly important and I want to hear more about the financial literacy. I want to hear a presentation, quite frankly, from CDC if they're going to administrate these funds. And maybe we're not there yet, maybe we're devising, but I'd, maybe I'd like to just meet with them privately first and understand more about.
With the Community Resource Center?
Oh, CRC, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure because you're talking about data too, so it wasn't.
Right.
So yes, the financial literacy is a component of the programs that are currently in existence and would be a significant component of a program that we brought forward to the city council because we know that's a priority. North County Lifeline, if Mr. Stump is still here, he spoke briefly about his program. I know there's a financial literacy component to that. How do you budget? How do you save? How do you set aside for a rainy day? You know, setting expectations about your income and your outcome are all important components to the factor. But we still are, and I don't know that, we call it a pilot project because it's a one-time, one-year funding source and not because of any other reason, it's just because it's finite. It's a pot of money that was granted through the budget and it didn't, it's not ongoing. And we don't know if it will continue in any shape or form. And so our goal would be to do the best we can to assist the most people as possible with this funding and see if it's successful.
And what, I guess what I'm saying is we don't yet know what the limits and options for the expenditure of this quarter million dollars is. Of course, the legislature has seen fit to reserve these funds for this specific purpose, but we don't know exactly what regulations that they may yet devise. I'm guessing there was statutory language that will be followed up with some kind of administrative language to create and devise the program.
Yes, we are expecting at some point to receive a draft contract through the State Department of Housing and Community Development where the funds would be provided to the city through. We have not seen that yet, though.
I would like to discuss the options when we know what they are, when we know what the limitations and the options for the expenditure of these funds are. I mean, I certainly want to bring these funds to Vista, so.
We expect based on the timeline that assuming, and we're seeing a majority support for the concept of a financial assistance program using this funding source, so when we bring the draft strategic plan back, we should have a significant amount of detail, if not in advance of that, to talk about what a program would look like as a part of the strategic plan.
Does the state law that makes these funds available, does it use that language? Does it limit it specifically to rapid rehousing or to?
Says prevention and diversion.
Okay. So, and I appreciate that staff has brought us a plan and our consultants have brought us a plan that would seem to fit within that description. I want to better examine the options and I really want to understand, it sounds like there are already communities using these programs? Is that accurate? What do we know about the empirical results and studies that have been done in other communities where these funds have been spent in this manner? I'd like to better understand what the science is because, again, I mean, the idea of writing somebody a check who's in need and having, going through a crisis is something we would all want to do. We all want to help somebody at their, at their moment of need. But we also, if it's somebody that we love, we think more about how do we truly help this person out of the problem that they have and not just about temporarily alleviating the symptom of the problem, right? That's true love and compassion is helping people solve the long-term problem. So if there are, if there's latitude within the program, if we don't have a concept here that we can demonstrate empirically through a study which compares a control group to a group that received resources, then I think we had to look at things that we have a greater sense of certainty about their ability to help people on a long-term basis. So I'm, for me, the jury is still out on the question of exactly how to use those funds, but certainly whatever is necessary to bring them here. And then when we do spend them, if we're bringing a million dollars jointly with the other cities, I would hope there'd be some resources there to study the effectiveness of it, both so that we could make the case for renewal of the application following years, but also so that we could demonstrate to the community that us being recipients of their state tax dollars, that we had wisely spent those funds. I'd also like to see, and I appreciate, in some of our low-income housing projects, one of the last ones that's sort of still in the works, we included a way to. one of the last ones that's sort of still in the works, we included a way to provide options for veterans. We certainly have more veterans than a typical community in America, given our proximity to Camp Pendleton and other naval installations in our community. I'd like to see us, if we're able to do it under the state law, I'd like to see us have a preference for assisting and counseling and working with resources on base so that we're not doubling up, but so that we could complement what's being done if, I mean, I've heard a number of these stories now of young men, I haven't met a young woman yet who's gotten out of the Marine Corps and suffered homelessness, but, you know, I know it's perplexing and frustrating and really saddening, disheartening, to know that somebody gets out of the Marine Corps serving our country and they find themselves homeless, is totally unacceptable. So what I would propose is the military and veteran community, in addition to, I would say, senior citizens and probably also women and children, the most vulnerable, I'd like to see how we can prioritize, you know, folks. And also, job training. Job training, taking somebody who's at risk, who may not have a skill, if they're having difficulty earning sufficient income to afford their housing, what could we do to support job training efforts that would perhaps benefit employers in our community, to train somebody to do a job that's available in our community that employers are asking us for, so that we could help train and marry people with jobs that would, you know, potentially increase their income? The final thing I want to say is, these are still relatively small amounts of money. Where we are making a grant, and, you know, if you bifurcate and say, one way we can help people is through education and long-term behavioral modification, the other is through some kind of an immediate grant, I'd like us to really think about the multiplier effect, what kinds of grants might multiply our resources or help some of those resources come back to us in the future. I have some more specific thoughts that, I'll get into with staff on that, but I think we, you know, fundamentally, this represents an expansion of the welfare state. And there is a place for welfare programs that's rightful and needful, but we want to spend the public's money in a way that delivers the kind of benefit and impact for the public that they expect from us as stewards of their hard-earned money. So that's what I have to say.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have a couple of more comments and a question. And going back to the $250,000 that the legislature has allocated for each of the four cities in the 76th Assembly District, I think it's great, and I do want to accept the money. The bill specifically requires us to work with the CRC, no other service provider within our jurisdiction.
The bill specifies that we need to be in coordination with the CRC. The CRC has indicated an interest in supporting programs that are already existing in Vista rather than expanding their footprint to Vista. So that's something we'll work out with them, but the bill language itself only identifies the CRC, yes.
Okay. And I appreciate that, that they would want to say, yes, let's use this money, we'll be an overseer or middle person, and we're going to work in concert with the programs you already have in your community that know your community. So I appreciate that. We've also said we don't know exactly the language or what the contract would look Not that I don't trust Sacramento, but I really don't trust Sacramento. And before I jump off this cliff into that water, I want to know how deep the water is and what else is swimming in it. So when we get that information, can you share that with us? I don't know if you have to do it in this forum or on a one-on-one basis, but I would actually really like to know what we're getting into. And, you know, there are just so many other things that could happen with this, with Sacramento. So I would just really want to know before we put both feet in the water.
Yes, and I'm seeing majority support for the concept of accepting this funding for the purpose for which it was defined, but we don't know those details, and we won't be making those decisions on a staff level that will come back to the City Council. Whether it has to be in a formal setting, I'm not quite sure yet, but the acceptance of the funds will for sure.
Right.
So as soon as we have more information, we will bring that back. We just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page moving forward so that we didn't get down a path with them and then have you guys tell us in November that it's not something you want to support.
No, and I appreciate that very much. The second thing I did want to ask, and I meant to bring this up before, and I do appreciate our commissioner asking this question, but as we have done with our other master plan, you know, we did our bicycle master plan workshops, we do our general plan workshops. This is a huge community issue and a lot of community outreach. So I don't see it on the calendar, and doesn't mean that's not on our calendar in the future, but once we develop the master plan at this level, I would actually like to see us do a workshop with the community to talk about it and get the community's input as to what they would like to see, or their comments on the master plan. I don't know if that's something that we've talked about or that staff has talked about, but I'd like to see us take this back out to the community before it has a rubber stamp on it at this level.
Yeah, Councilwoman Rigby, when you say take it out to the community, our plan was to have these workshops with you, get your feedback, come back to you, let's say, December or January, and finalize the strategic plan. You would like an additional step outside of that, outside of this public forum?
I would, or at least in some format, to put it out to the community and ask the community's feedback on it before we take a final vote on it. I just think it's important. This issue really touches everybody in the community, and I think it's really important that our community have an input, have input and a say on what we do, or to understand what we're doing and how it impacts the community. And we've already had community members asking to know that information. So I'm just saying that I don't see any reason that we can't put it out, even if it's through social media or all of our avenues to communicate with the community, to say, review this, give us your feedback.
And we have done, excuse me, we have done that with these workshops, we'll continue to do that, and once the plan is finalized, we can put it out there on social media, on the platform, to let everybody know, there it is, so they can come talk to you about it at the meeting. I did want to make one clarification on the CRC issue. When we have that information, as Ms. Zimmerman said, we'll report it to you. We can give that to you informally, but we'll also bring it formally back at the next Homelessness Strategic Planning Workshop that we have, or meeting that we have that follows the information.
And I just wanted to add on to the city manager's statement about how to get the information out. Once we have a draft strategic plan, what we would do is, again, put it on our website and push it out through our social channels, but we also have received email addresses from people who came to previous meetings that wanted to know when more things are happening, and so we'll push it out that way as well.
And thank you, I appreciate all of those. And we have so many avenues to communicate with the community, and I recognize that. But if there's a timeframe, and I don't know if the timeframe works, and I don't need an answer, but for our Vista, maybe put an article in there about the process and a link to the website for people to see what we're putting together, if that works with the timeframe of what we're doing here. I just think it's important, so thank you for that. Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Contreras.
I just wanted to agree with Councilmember Rigby. I think it is really important to bring it back to the public, and if time were to permit, I would like the public to really be able to weigh in on it. It's a lot of money that we're looking to put towards this issue, that is a real issue for those that are experiencing homelessness or housing insecurity, and a real issue for those residents in Vista that, you know, are in proximity to some of the encampments, for those who are chronically homeless. So, you know, it's just been such a big topic, not just here in Vista, but we're hearing it, you know, nationally. So it seems to me like there should be enough time between now and next year to be able to let the public weigh in in a real way. So I just agree with Councilmember Rigby on that point. Thank you.
And because I haven't said anything, I'll be brief. I support the financial assistance, but I really think there should be like a financial literacy class or just money management of some kind, so that they don't get the money for a while and then fall back into the same trap again. So I think that that's important, and I also like the home share program. I think that's a great thing, especially for seniors or for students or whatever, so I think that's a good approach. I support those things, so. With that, does that, you have enough-
Yes, thank you. We do have enough information, and I believe we have your direction. I believe Ms. Lee was going to just wrap it up to let you know what's coming next.
Yes, so again, on October 22nd, we will be discussing political advocacy, education, outreach, and improvement to quality of life. Also, on November 12th, we'll be discussing the reduction of homelessness, which will, then we'll be talking about housing first as well. We'll also be recapping all the outreach that we've been doing as well. And then you also asked about some various information regarding some about safe parking and shelters and locations, so we will, all the questions that you did ask, we will be bringing those back to you in those particular sessions. And thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all the speakers who came and gave their input tonight, we appreciate that. So with that, we will go on to our next discussion item, which is D3, placement of, no, D2, Public Plaza, Main Street, and South Indiana. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley is going to provide the staff report on that.
Thank you, Mayor. We're back to discuss the Main Street Plaza area. This is located at the southeast corner of Main Street in Indiana, shown in the overhead here. It includes some parking lot improvements and street and sidewalk area that were made in 1999 and 2000, when the current location of Main Street was relocated to the north where Vista Village sits today. It's about a little under a half acre in size, and it includes about 26 parking spaces within the actual property, as well as about nine parking spaces on the street that front the site. Some pictures of the location, the prominent gazebo that sits at the corner, as well as some public art, are located within a widened sidewalk area on the property today. So staff began evaluating redesign of the Main Street Plaza area, starting in the fall of 2018. We had a number of community meetings. Almost a year ago today, we started with a business and property owner meeting in the Morrisby Vance Community Room, where about 30 people attended and provided input on a design option that was initially prepared. Some additional designs were requested, and on January 29th of this year, we met with a number of business and property owners, again, at the Wavelength Brewery, to discuss some of the additional designs and considerations that were requested by those that reviewed the plan. We presented all of the options to the Parks and Rec Commission in February of this year, and then we came to council in April to discuss the alternatives. We had three project alternatives that were prepared by the city's landscape architect, as well as a plan that was submitted by the owners of the bank building, the Lowens, and I'll go through those real briefly. The council directed us to move forward at that time with Alternative C, which was a project that rearranges the space to add some parking and provide some curb pop-outs, some parking on the street, to remove the gazebo, to add a small vendor structure and associated seating for a vendor use within the space, an artificial turf area with some seating and landscaping around it, and a small stage area. And this is what Alternative C looks like. It would expand the area of public space within the plaza itself. The large turf area would be in the center with some seating around it and landscaping, as well as a small stage that would front the turf area. And you can see in the back right-hand corner, there would be a vendor structure with some seating around it that could accommodate a small retail or food use. There'd also be bulbouts at the corner and along Main Street to accommodate better pedestrian access, and some striping and parking enhancements to provide some additional parking on the street. This would net an additional five parking spaces while creating a larger plaza area for use of the public. Staff reviewed the cost for the construction of this alternative, and it's estimated to be $594,000. That's roughly $500,000 for construction and design, and about $100,000 in contingencies. And staff is recommending that we add a project to the capital improvement program and allocate park development fee funding for this alternative to redesign that space. In the April meeting, the City Council further directed staff to evaluate the Lowens proposal, which was to close the street and to develop the larger area with a public plaza. We looked at the steps that were needed to close the street, at least the portion of South Indiana between Main Street and the alley that's directly adjacent to the bank building, and we identified an estimated cost of about $50,000 exclusive of staff time to go through that process. The overall cost of the project, if we were to develop the Lowens plan, is estimated at about $2.7 million, based on the extent of public improvements that were proposed there. If we were to go down this road of further evaluating the street closure, we do not recommend moving forward with Alternative C at this time, because we'd want to look at the larger space and come up with a better public plan for use of the entire space. So just to give you some idea roughly of the design cost for that alternative, we've estimated that $2.7 million, but we would have to spend about $50,000 to get there. This is the Lowens proposal as it was originally submitted. There's been some other design alternatives that have been submitted, but essentially it was a farmer's market concept that was to be using the street space, as well as expanding the parking over on the east side of the area, and then creating a public plaza that would open up onto the bank building and provide some space for vendors and seating for customers. The street closure would cover, as I mentioned, the area between Main Street and the public alley, as shown in the overhead here, and would increase the area for planning by about a quarter of an acre. The identified studies that we recommend undertaking before moving down this road would be a traffic analysis to determine how circulation around downtown would work without this connector, a geotechnical evaluation for the space itself, environmental review under SEQA, defining legal rights and easements for the fronting property owners, and then the actual street vacation process, which would have to come before the council for a public hearing. So tonight, staff's recommending adding a new CIP project for the Main Street Plaza, following the conceptual design that was initially presented in Alternative C, with the appropriate funding provided. Or alternatively, we may pursue the street closure concept on South Indiana with initiation of the recommended studies at direction of City Council. So that completes my staff presentation. We're open for any comments and input that the council would like to provide. Thank you.
Can I have several speakers? Do you want to hear the speakers first? Okay. We're going to hear the speakers first, so we'll start, and you have two minutes. We'll start with Julie Lowen, followed by Dave, it looks like Genos, followed by Stephanie Morris.
So I want to point out something. The street closure was merely an idea, one of many that we've presented. Another one of the ideas we've presented is realigning Indiana with, going with diagonal parking up each side, which creates more parking and gives you 100% of the plaza area for a town square, which is another great idea. I think what we're trying to say is, we don't want, and I'm nervous, you would think I'm not, but I am, we don't want something in the downtown that is not going to create the regional destination, that is going to respect the owners that are putting in millions. Because of the meeting this last time, Dave and I have abandoned our idea of a rooftop bar. You've probably lost at least 40 to 50 jobs there, along with an additional $4 million of investment into that building. We're opening a school in Carlsbad instead. We just felt like that it just wasn't a good risk of money, because we're not going to be able to, without getting enough people into the downtown, we're simply not going to be able to get enough people into the rooftop bar, the lower bar, Belgian Beaver, the When Pigs Fly, the new Flying Pig restaurant, you have a lot going on down there. And without creating a regional destination in the downtown, you're not going to create an economy that's going to thrive and going to give the families that I work with the job skills that they need so that they don't go in and out of homelessness. We actually rescue these families all the time. What they need is not a financial literacy class, what they need are job skills and the ability to actually scale up. The workforce partnership that we recommended in that downtown area would directly address exactly what you addressed in the previous issue. Instead of giving people a little bit of this and a little bit of that, organizing systems that are already in place, such as our traffic department that picks these people up off the street all the time when their alternator breaks, fixes it, and they're back to work the very next day. That's 1,200 families. That's 1,200 families countywide. And I'm telling you that they need job skills. And putting a workforce partnership and putting a smart idea into the downtown, creating a public market, doing something more than just spending $600,000 to create what everybody downtown is calling Vagrant Park. That's the only thing that's going to happen there, is it's just going to give more people place to stand. The other night, I was followed out by the same three guys with the Pitbull, who drop off the 10 kids with the black backpacks and they canvass the downtown with drugs. It happens all the time. And putting a park with artificial turf and trees and things like that down there, when it's just a Band-Aid on a system that needs to be fixed, it's just not going to help.
Your two minutes have been up.
So we're just asking that the city council wait and allow the business owners to work maybe with the Chamber of Commerce and come up with a great idea, rather than putting a Band-Aid and wasting $600,000.
Julie, that's not fair to everybody else. Dale, followed by Stephanie Morris, followed by Natalie Trevino.
I kind of want to keep this short and sweet. I kind of gathered in, earlier in the meeting, how cost-sensitive everybody is here in Vista and not want to just waste dollars. At first, I thought this C was a good project, but then as, after I'm looking at it and studying that a little bit, we're really not doing anything but getting rid of the clubhouse, what we call the gazebo. It's just, and so it's the same thing we have now, only we just don't have the gazebo. What I'd like to ask is I'd like us to just slow down, put it on hold, give the merchants downtown. I've just kind of moved into downtown, you know, I'm kind of a new merchant downtown right now, and give us a chance to really collectively get together and come up with a plan that will help us all, that will bring people into Vista. That's what we need. We need outside people coming into Vista. We need our residents to stay into Vista. And I think just taking a parking lot, getting rid of a gazebo and putting a few cheeries, I don't think that's, I don't think that's the answer. Do I know what the answer is? I don't, I don't. Do I think we can find the answer? Yeah, I believe we do. I think if we work together as a team and we continue to investigate it and continue to explore our options, when that answer arrives, we're going to know it. We're going to say, yeah, that's it. That's our golden key. And I think that's what we need, is if we can just have six months as merchants downtown to put our heads together and utilize staff and utilize anybody at the community to make Vista what it can be. I think we're much better off than to take $600,000 and put something into a project that, eh, it's kind of there, it might work, might not work, and I think we can do much better. So I'm just asking for six months. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Stephanie Morris, followed by Natalie Trevino, followed by Terry Woods.
Mayor Redder and council members, I just take a couple of seconds. I just want to speak in support of putting the brakes on briefly and allow the business owners and people to come together. We're finally formulating a really good team spirit and having dialogue, and we'd like additional time to go forward with that dialogue and come up with a plan that would be beneficial for our city of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Trevino, followed by Terry Woods.
Hi. I would just like to echo all my friends and ask for a small postponement so that we can all get together and talk about a better option for the gazebo area. I think it's awesome that it's happening, but I think that we could really create something magical downtown, so a six-month.
Thank you. Terry?
Good evening, folks. Let you know that I've talked my wife and my kids and I've decided not to chain myself to the gazebo, so in protest. Can we put it back on the seat, John? If you were to stick with C, the only concept that I see is take your shade trees, put them on the other side, just flip them over, put the stage at that side so you'll have the stage facing towards the parking lot. That way, if you have a larger crowd, that you could expand into the parking lot. Build a stage 10 by 15, something that me and John and a couple other people could play on, not just a little small one. And so if you're going to stick with C, I just think about flipping it around and I'm not going to chain myself to the gazebo, so.
Thanks, Terry. Matt?
Yeah, I had an idea for downtown that just kind of came to me today. Basically, you just kind of like remove all the asphalt and prevent cars from sort of entering any area downtown, so from like Shacks to the school, to the Yellow Deli, to the skyscraper, even across the street to like the movie theater, and even all the way down like South Santa Fe. Pretty much just make all of that walkable space. It's a pretty radical idea. I can drive down South Santa Fe and kind of see the city as going in a different direction, but I at least wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, thank you. That's our last speaker. So we'll go to Councilmember Deputy Mayor Franklin.
You know, one thing that popped into my head right away is what underground utilities? Have we taken a look at the underground utilities there in Indiana? Because we tear up the street a lot. We put all the sewer, electric, and all the other utilities underneath the roadway because we can't tear your house down, but we can tear the street up. And it just occurred to me, I don't know, have we looked at, I mean, there's the possibility we have to tear up the plaza if we built a plaza.
Yeah, we would have to realign the utilities as part of this effort. But there are no utilities, major underground utilities in the plaza area. They're more all in the street.
Yeah, but we don't, we haven't taken a look at what utilities might be there.
No, there are some utilities in Indiana, we're aware of that. So if there was some work on the street closure, we would have to reserve some space for the utility corridors.
Yeah, okay. That's just something that popped into my head. It's not a, it's not a deal breaker for anything, but it just popped into my head. You know, we bury things for decades and sometimes don't even know what's underneath the street until it's too late and we have to tear it up. And that's definitely something we have to think about in the planning.
Deputy Mayor, if I might add, if we were to go, if the council supported going forward with the plan to put a plaza there, take away Indiana, we would redo all of the utilities underground so that we weren't going through and digging them up at a future time.
Yeah. I completely agree with all the folks who came tonight to say, you know, what's the rush on this? It's been a little bit of an issue for some time now. I don't see the impetus to solve it right now when we don't have our finger. I do not like Option C. I can't particularly put my finger on it. There are some of the aspects of the plaza idea that Ms. Lowen brought forward that I really like. Obviously, you know, we need to know what the impact on traffic is. I think I actually kind of agree with Matt. It might be really interesting to, you know, I don't want to freak any of the merchants out, but I think the whole idea of creating a pedestrian plaza right there is maybe not a horrible idea. I'm not, you know, I don't think we're, I don't think we have a plan in front of us that I can, I can go all in on, but the idea of a little stage and some businesses there and, you know, a food court or a place you can get your barbecue and go, you know, eat it outside and it could be cool. But I just agree with the merchants. I don't think we've got the thing in front of us that just, you know, really lights everybody on fire and everybody goes, man, that is going to be so awesome. So I think let's just keep it to the drafting board on this and let's, let's keep working on it and let's get, you know, a lot of buy-in from the people who are investing a lot of money in that area that they think will be successful. I personally place a lot of stock in people that are putting their life savings into their businesses. You know, they have to, these risks they're taking and their input is critical to their livelihood and for us, it's fun and we want to be a part of it, but I put a lot of stock in what they think will make their businesses successful and make the downtown successful because they're the ones that are putting up the lion's share of the money to make it happen. So I want to really listen to what they have to say.
Councilmember Green?
All right. First of all, thank all you business owners for sticking around until your discussion item came up. That's awesome. Initially, I wasn't a huge fan of the Lowen plan and it had to do with closing down that road and after speaking with a lot of the merchants, a lot of the area, and driving through the area regularly, I love all of the restaurants down there. Still haven't tried the Blueberry Cobbler or whatever, but I'm going to get there. Your Peach Cobbler is amazing. When Pigs Fly, for the record, go by that. But I do agree with the merchants of pumping the brakes and saying, hey, what can we do to really make this more of a wow fact, more of an attraction, something that can really infuse the downtown businesses? If that means closing the road, look at closing the road. It does sound like by pumping our brakes, in addition to pumping our brakes, we're approving the allocation of $50,000 in order to do a little bit more investigation. Is that correct? It's going to cost us 50 grand to investigate this plan or?
No, it would only cost us 50 grand if we wanted to pursue closing the streets. So by putting the brakes on any project out here and bringing a professional design consultant in to do some additional work with the businesses, it's probably another $10,000 or $20,000.
Okay, so we're not saying, hey, spend 50 grand right now? Okay, that's cool. But yeah, like the, like the business owners say, as cool as it is to have a little turf place, a little stage and things like that, if we could make it something remarkable, that would be awesome. $2.6 million as opposed to $600,000. I mean, it's, you know, what, four times the cost of doing something little? And I really think if we're going to look at it as a park or community structure, something like that, we might be able to get some type of grants. And I know that our business owners would write letters of support and I know one of our business owners would just be on the phone harassing people for money to get this done as well. And we would support you 100% in that too, by the way, ma'am. So anyways, I think this is something that's really doable. When I looked at it initially, I was thinking, hey, eight, 10 million bucks, that's a lot of money. But we're talking 2.5, 2.6 million possibly for something this, you know, changing, landscape changing in the downtown, I think that it would be super huge and it would really help with our Vista Nights Out and our Strawberry Festival and just all of our events, having the central location for downtown would be super awesome. So I'm excited to see what that can be as opposed to just the little corner park there. So thank you so much for bringing this forward and thank you guys so much for coming up with ideas and thinking out of the box and not settling. That's why you guys are business owners and leaders in our community because you're innovative, you're outside-the-box thinkers, and we are lucky to have you here in Vista. So thank you so much and I look forward to you guys working with staff to come up with something amazing that we can all support and be really happy about for our town. Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras?
I 100% agree with my colleagues, with Deputy Mayor Franklin and Councilmember Green. Initially, this Option C was around, we were looking at $350,000. Yeah, so I mean, with it coming back at almost $600,000, that is a completely different conversation. So if we're going to invest, you know, $600,000 on a small project versus rethinking it, retooling it, seeing how we could activate it better and really create a focal point for the downtown, I think we have to do that. I think we have a responsibility to make sure that we are maximizing the taxpayers' dollar here and really creating some good benefits to build community. And I know, you know, that's at the heart of the Lowen proposal is really building community. So I'm 100% behind that. Initially, you know, $350,000 is a great number, but it just didn't, the math didn't turn out that way. So it's just a completely different conversation for me at this point. And, you know, I actually did like Matt's comments as well. I wish that there was a lot more walking that you could do in the downtown, especially when you have so many breweries located within, you know, one mile radius. It can get a little dangerous when I'm downtown and I'm seeing people going from brewery to brewery. It'd be great if they'd never had to encounter a car. And another thing too that I would like to see is a few more options for, you know, parking your bike. I just finally got new tires on my bike, so I'm going to attempt to ride it. Wish me luck, everybody. It's been a while. But yeah, I think, you know, let's, let's take a look at what else we could do. It's such a different conversation going from $350,000 to almost $600,000 for this small project. So yeah, let's put the brakes on it and kick it back to the community and let our business leaders do what they do best and come up with some, some really fun ideas while keeping costs in mind. So, all right, well, thank you so much. I really appreciate all the comments prior and I look forward to, to hearing a little bit more from my colleagues.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that presentation and I appreciate hearing the comments from all of our speakers tonight. You might recall when this came before us the last time, none of the designs excited me at all. This one seemed to be the least, you know, I guess the most palatable for the monies that we are willing to spend, but I had my own issues with it. The Lowen plan, very grand, almost, you know, $2.5 million. We don't have that kind of money. So I like the idea and that's one of the things that I was going to bring up anyway, is put the brakes on it. Let's look at it. Let's get involved with the community that's down there, talk about what we want to do with it. I can't agree with getting rid of parking and driving down there and it was talked about wanting to make it a regional destination. If you can't get people who can drive down there and park there, it's not a regional destination anymore. It's a walkable place for the people who live downtown and you've limited yourself to your customer base at that point. So I am not in favor of eliminating streets or parking spaces, especially if you want to keep bringing people down there. I do think there's a lot we can do to make it nicer, to make it more community feeling. And as it was said, I don't know what that is. I'm not the park designer. So I would say, put the brakes on it. Let's revisit this. Let's let the community that lives down there and particularly works down there, the business owners, talk about it, but keep in mind, if you want it to be a destination, you have to let people get to it. I mean, I, you know, live off Sunset by Emerald. I'm not walking there. I'm going to drive there. So just keep that in mind. And then anything that does come back to us, bless you. When we were talking about this particular design that you see up here, as it was mentioned, it was talked about $300,000. It's coming back at $594,000. Money is an issue for us in the city for all aspects, for all departments, not just for something like this. So anything that we do come back with, any ideas that do come back to us for consideration have to come with a funding source, whether it's, we might be able to find a grant. I want to know, there are grants out there for this kind of thing. I don't want to try to put out there another plan with nothing behind it to be able to pull it through to the finish line. So if we can't do something and identify the funding source for it, there's no point. So those were my comments and suggestions.
You guys won't agree with, I don't always agree with you and you won't like what I have to say, but I had a business down there for 20 years and so I have a lot of history downtown. Was there when the Vista Village Drive actually went down Main Street. It didn't go down the downtown and we looked at closing off the street at that time, instead of having Main Street, have it just closed off. And the downtowns that we researched with that, they failed because the people couldn't park close enough and they didn't want to walk down there. So I would be against taking that, making that all walking. You can walk now down there. There's lots of people that walk down. It's good to see people walking. I like that, but I also like the parking down there. Farmer's markets, we've tried that several times when I was down there. They weren't successful. They turned into swap meets and they turned into other problems, crime problems down there. So those didn't work. This is the face of your downtown and just so you know, it took us, I can't tell you, it took us 10 years to build the Krikorian Center. It takes years and years before you can build anything. Before you're going to get 2.6 million, it's going to be a long time and that's the face of your downtown, that little thing right there. We've been, we've had, for over a year, we've had plans out there for these, for the park. And so we looked at it and everybody came to this decision after looking and they, and we had input, we had meetings, we had several meetings where we put the things out there that people came downtown. So now you're talking about going around again, you know, same thing around again. So anyway, so, and we always talk about having pocket parks downtown and so, you know, around the city, you know, I think this would be great. Your businesses are doing well down there. You want something down there that looks nice, that, you know, not, I mean, it's going to be like it is now for a long time unless you, you know, somebody makes a decision to go forward with it. And as far as closing off Indiana, like I drove down there today and I couldn't find a parking place down Main Street, so I turned down Indiana and the parking's all down on Broadway down and that way. Parking's that way more than on Main Street. I mean, there's some on Main Street, but if you can't find it, you go down Indiana to find parking on Broadway. If you close that off, you're going to divert the traffic down to Allen's Alley. If you close that off, you're going to divert the traffic down to Allen's Alley and that, that street is not made for traffic. It's just a little alley down there. So I would be against closing that off, Indiana off. I think that you have a lot of parking on that street and I think you'd be doing a disservice to the businesses if they, if you took away the parking on that street and did something. So anyway, I, I, I know you're all going that way and so I just want you to know I'm not going with you. So, so with that, I'll give you, Deputy Mayor.
And I don't know if I'm necessarily going one direction or another right now. I just, I just don't see a pathway that I, I do want to go down yet. I do want to do something down there. I just, I just don't see in front of me right now the thing that I'm going, yeah, that's the thing we got to do. Was the 50,000 only for the traffic study? Is that what that number is?
No, it included all the other studies that we need to do to look at closing the street.
Okay, so, but it's, it's exclusively about the, the street closure?
Correct.
Just the research that, okay. One of the reasons that I couldn't get so excited, the tree line, it gave me some concern about visibility and I would have really liked to have seen an elevation. And had I seen an elevation, I might have seen something here that I liked, but I'm having a lot of difficulty from the bird's eye view that you presented, understanding what the visibility through the space is, which I think is, I think we all think is absolutely critical because we don't want a negative element to use this as their clubhouse. That's just absolutely critical. It's, so when we, when we move forward, I think we should pay for an elevation drawing as well as the bird's eye.
And could you add big trees to that? Big trees, tall trees?
If they're tall enough, they, they provide canopy without...
Not sticks.
Yeah, I mean, my, yeah, my concern is...
And lots of tree shade.
I, I can't, I can't look at this, this bird's eye that's on the screen right now and not think it looks really difficult. To me, the visibility through seems like it would be limited. I don't know if that's true or not, but without the elevation, it's really kind of hard to imagine. What was the funding source for the 600,000 dollars that were, had before us?
Park development fees.
Okay, so we can, we can use park money. Okay, that was a question I had. And then just something that jumped out at me, because we do have so much alcohol revenue downtown, we should think about a ride share, you know, point, whether it's a sign on the curb that says, you know, this is your ride share location. But that suggests to people when they come down, they're like, oh, yeah, we should, we should get an Uber to come downtown. We can drink, we can eat, we can walk around and then we can get back in our Uber and go home without ever being in our own cars, which is really more safety, I think. You know, but I think it's also good for business. But that, that really suggests destination, you know, spend the money to Uber there and I, I think we'll get there. I think we'll come up with something that'll be really cool and, and, and I hope it's something that we all look at and go, wow, this is the thing that we were waiting for.
Mayor, if I could interject real quick. One of the comments that was made was park funds were planned to be used for option C if we were to go forward with that. I did want to say that if we were going to do something more elaborate, that's more than just above ground, that includes undergrounding and street replacement and different types of elements, park funds may not be eligible for some of those funding purposes. And I do think having a vision for the downtown is a good thing. We've worked with the owners over the last year and we can continue to work with the owners if that's council's direction. But it does, as Councilwoman Rigby and the mayor said, it does take funding and I know some of you also said that. And we would have to be very cognizant of that because I know there's other needs that all of you have for our priorities in Vista as well as downtown. So we just need to be very cognizant of that.
So Deputy Mayor, are you still on?
Since you're giving me the opportunity, I'm going to close by saying, if this is not the correct financial time to make this investment, then that's something that we need to think about too.
Councilmember Contreras.
I just want to say, that's a really wonderful thought that Deputy Mayor Franklin had about ride share and kind of putting that type of, almost like a mobility hub within the downtown as part of this plan. Because it could really drive people to a specific spot in the downtown. So I would like to explore that topic a little bit more and, yeah, I mean, this is real money, right? So we, we have to really be cognizant of how big we can go and look at how fast we can go, right? So, because we definitely need to elevate the downtown in, in the specific area. So we'll see what comes, what comes about, you know, all these different points that, that were made up here and the points that were made by the business community, but it's just such a different conversation. I mean, 350,000 is, that was awesome if that would have came, if this project would have came in, I would have, I would have been really happy, 350K for this little type of pocket park, but coming in at 600,000, like that's, that's a huge difference. So, you know, maybe in the, at the end, we don't, you know, close off any of the streets, but we look at, you know, how the loan proposal expands this option C further down and maybe leaving, you know, the street open. I don't know, but we do have to be cognizant of the, of how much this is going to cost and the time that it's going to take. So, but I just, that got me really excited, what Deputy Mayor Franklin said about, you know, having a ride share down there. I think that's a great idea.
So do you have enough direction now or do you need...
Yes, Mayor, I think we do. I've got notes of all the comments I got tonight. We can spend some additional design money, work with the business community and come back and revisit this after the first of the year.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just before we leave this item, how much have we expended already on design on this?
About 15,000.
Okay, that's not an unreasonable...
Awesome. Okay, so move on to the next thing then? Okay, so the next thing is D3s, Placement of a Daughters of the American Revolution Historical or Commemorative Marker at the Rancho Buena Vista Adobe. Councilmember Rigby asked for this item to be placed on the agenda, so I'm going to turn this over to her and ask her to introduce it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am a very proud member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, which is a lineage organization founded in 1890 for descendants of patriots who fought in the Revolutionary War. I have many patriots who fought in the war and, and one of my ancestors actually signed the Declaration of Independence and I'm very proud of that. We have a DAR chapter here in Vista. We meet over at Shadow Ridge every month and it's called the Rancho Buena Vista Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And we take our name from our Rancho Buena Vista Adobe here in Vista. One of the three pillars of the DAR is for historic preservation. And we would like to put an historic marker at the Adobe, recognizing the history of the Adobe, when the land grant was originally given and to whom, and some of the history on, on the Adobe. And in order for the DAR to affix a commemorative plaque to a structure, we have to have permission from the owner of, of the structure or the historical site. And so I'm, I'm here today to ask my council colleagues to agree that we would like to see recognition from the DAR for our Adobe's historic significance in our community. And the plaque would say, and this was several iterations of the plaque, the verbiage on it, to recognize the history of it and the families who have contributed to it, who built it and contributed to it. So there is some verbiage in the, the packet here. I want the, the council to know that there's no impact fiscally to the city because the DAR Chapter Rancho Buena Vista will be paying for the plaque. So having the plaque made, having the verbiage imprinted on it or, or I guess it's sculpted into it and then affixed to the particular spot at the Adobe, all of those funds would be paid for out of the DAR. We would do that ourselves. So the, the plaque would read Rancho Buena Vista. Felipe Subria, an Indian from the San Luis Rey Mission, farmed this land for several years and was granted title to Buena Vista in 1845 by Governor Pio Pico, the governor of Alta, California. Jesus Machado and his wife Lugarda Osuna purchased the rancho in 1852 and are believed to have built the first two Adobe rooms of the existing structure. Lorenzo Soto purchased the rancho in 1854 and added two more Adobe rooms. After the death of Lorenzo Soto, 1864 Rancho Buena Vista was sold to date Cave Kautz. The Kautz family continued to develop the rancho and added the main structure of the beautiful building we see today, presented by Rancho Buena Vista Chapter National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. And it would have the date that it would be put up. And so there is in your packet a picture of what an existing DAR commemorative, commemorative plaque looks like. So it would have all of that verbiage on it and it would just have, I don't have a picture up there, but it would have our DAR logo on the top. And that's all we're asking for. And so there is an application that has to be submitted and it just says, what we're asking for is a written statement authorizing installation of the marker from the property owner or custodian of the land where the marker is to be placed. The letter must be dated within the past year of the application submission. The signed dated letter should include a statement explaining by what right the writer has the authority to grant this permission. So I, I would think, or I think, that commemorating the historic value of our Adobe is a good thing for our community and it would be there for all posterity. And so with that, I would move that we authorize the mayor to submit a letter on behalf, to the Rancho Buena Vista Chapter to complete the application for the installation of a commemorative marker to be placed at our Rancho Buena Vista Adobe. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Contreras.
I love history, so I'm totally for this. I, I second your motion. I don't have much to say. I think you gave us a lot of information as to what the historical significance is and I really don't see a problem. In fact, I, I think it's a really good thing, right, to make sure that we make visible the history that's here in our town. So, thank you so much for bringing this forward. I would have had no idea.
Deputy Mayor.
I'm also a plaque reader and I third your motion.
Councilmember Green.
Once again, I want to thank you for bringing this forward and also I'd like to thank the DAR for all the research they did, the 11 items that were listed in our agenda report with the deed books and the marriage licenses and just, all that stuff was so cool to look up and it's something we drive by all the time and we forget about who was here before us and how it all happened and the fact we still have records of that and that we get to honor them as a council is amazing. So I think it's a great opportunity for our council to step back and say, hey, thank, thank you for what you do. So thank the DAR for everything they did in getting this information to us. Appreciate it and I consider myself your fourth.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd be your fifth, but I have one speaker, Matt.
Oh.
You might be sixth.
Put me down as sixth, yeah. I'm actually reading a book titled 1775 about the American Revolution. I also love history. Good luck with that bike. But I actually was just reading about the sons and daughters of the revolution yesterday. The Sons of Neptune was like another interesting name. I thought that was pretty cool. But like learning about the cities and the people involved at, at that time and just seeing this on the agenda, I'm just kind of curious, you know, is there, is there anyone on the city council who's, is a daughter of the revolution and maybe could share with us like a family story or at this point like a family legend, because it has been a few years?
Well, I, I am a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution. I have several patriots who fought. One of my patriots was, his character was depicted in the movie with Mel Gibson, the minister who ran with the Swamp Fox, which was Mel Gibson's character. He was a captain in that, that particular army. And then as I mentioned earlier, one of my ancestors signed the Declaration of Independence. He was John Witherspoon, who was also the president of the College of New Jersey, which we know now as to be Princeton University. He lost everything as a signer and he spent the rest of his life disabled, blind and everything he had to try to rebuild College of New Jersey. And he died very poor and is buried there. So I have a whole lot of other stories if you'd like to talk offline.
Yeah, absolutely. And John Witherspoon, I actually recognize that name from the book.
Thank you. Okay, with that, so we have to vote because there's a motion in a second. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Okay, with that, we will go to our oral communications and so we have two speakers and so they have, you have two minutes each. Is Mary Winters? Mary here?
Okay, my name is Mary Winters. I reside in the Marlin Drive Town Homes up the street. Marlin Drive Town Homes are multifamily units covered by the RM Multi Residential Zoning Ordinance of the city, wherein each unit is allowed only one adult pet. I have been plagued by the three dogs living at 975 Marlin Drive owned by Mark and Kim Campbell since the summer of 2015. The dogs are led out early in the morning prior to 7:00 AM to do their business. The dogs insist on barking as soon as they go outside. Even one dog going outside at a time and barking is just enough to wake me. My bedroom window is 30 feet from the Campbell yard. The dogs also bark inside their unit with the windows open all night. So I am awakened throughout the night whenever the dogs hear something going on outside that bothers them. The dogs are not crated, nor do they wear barking collars when indoors. Regardless of whether they wear a barking collar or not, the collar is not effective in preventing the dogs from barking the first couple of barks. Those are the barks that wake me up. The decimal level of each dog's bark must exceed 32 decimals because I can hear the dogs over my 32 decimal rated industrial earplugs. I can hear the dogs over my fan on high speed. I can hear the dogs when the window is, when my window is shut. I have tried putting an insulation board in the window. I can still hear the dogs. My hearing aids are out, fan on full blast, windows closed, insulation in the windows, 32 decimal earplugs in, and I am awakened by the dogs. I have complained numerous times to the Humane Society, my homeowners association, and finally to the city last July. None have been able to stop the barking.
Your time is up. I'm sorry.
I tried to put this on the agenda. Joe is now ignoring me too. So I'll continue this.
No, your, your time is up.
I'll continue this next month.
Okay.
And the month after that if I have to, until I finish this and until I read my 12 pages of dog bark.
Your time's up, ma'am. Mark Johnson.
I've been really patient, so I'll continue the, the barking dog situation because that's what I'm here for too. So my wife and I live in District 1, Councilmember Contreras's district. I've been able to work with her on a couple of different matters in the past very successfully and I want to continue to do so. This matter involves the barking dog. I have a couple instances whereby I have neighbors that ignore the barking dog rules in the noise ordinances around the, the city of Vista. I have too complained through the Humane Society and the city of Vista, which the city of Vista contracts with the Humane Society and have done so unsuccessfully. My, my wife and I have, our contention is that the process doesn't work really well and it needs to be revamped and I'm wholeheartedly in, in support of that. So I'm here today to ask that that get revamped, the policies and procedures that are, for barking dogs get revamped so that, the, the actual issue is more so enforcement. So if, if there's a barking dog issue, the, the individual or individuals that are, are non-compliance, they are in essence able to continue with their dogs barking because there's no consequences or very little consequences, okay? My first approach or our first approach would be to directly approach the, the person or persons and talk to them directly first before we decide on taking other remedies. But again, I think the process that we've experienced has, has failed and that the city of Vista needs to rethink that, that process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, we move on to our remarks. Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, we move on to our remarks. So I will do my little council member remark, or comments here. So I'm pleased to announce that we are continuing our year-long crime rate reduction. Sand Egg's mid-year report found that overall crime rate in the city of Vista is 3% lower than mid-year 2018. I want to thank you to the Sheriff's Department for all they do for our city. They're back there guarding our doors tonight. The complete report is online at cityofvista.com, and, and they do a great job. Sheriff is doing a great job in Vista. We're very proud that their, our crime rate is so low. And we're actually lower than some of the surrounding cities, so I'm very proud of that. The public is invited to a free emergency preparedness and resource fair at the McClellan Senior Center tomorrow, Wednesday 25th, from 9:30 until 11:30 AM. This is a great opportunity to learn how to be better prepared for disaster. Okay, this doesn't go on, on TV until Friday, right? So then how will they know this is tomorrow?
That's correct. And I think the chief already took care of that earlier in his remarks as well.
But if it's tomorrow, then who will know?
No, no, this, this, this is a live broadcast, actually. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's hundreds of people listening.
It is a live broadcast, and we have a ton of likes out there right now. So keep going.
Okay, so welcome to my public that's out there listening.
Multiple, multiple people.
National Ride Share Week is September 30th through October 4th. So join Sand Egg as they celebrate the many benefits of commuting alternatives. Go to icommute.com to learn more. And volunteers are needed to help out at the city of Vista's Arbor Day Tree Planting on Saturday, October 19th at Bringle Terrace Park from 9 until 12. Volunteer by yourself or with a group, and registration is online at cityofvista.com. Come plant some trees in Bringle Terrace. So that's mine. So I will go down the aisle, and I will go with Karina, Councilmember Contreras.
Awesome. Well, you know what? It's been a really great meeting. As always, we've had a, a really thorough discussion on some topics here in the city that really require a lot of attention. I appreciate all the remarks from my colleagues. We, you know, I think we, we gave staff some really good direction today, and I'm very happy. And I love to end council meetings being really happy, especially on a Taco Tuesday. So, now, you know, I don't want to talk too much about the dog barking issue. I mean, obviously, it has been an issue for a long time. It's not something that we can probably solve overnight, but I would like us to survey other cities, specifically to see what best practices they have. And perhaps, you know, there's some information that we can glean from that. So I would love to see a list of, you know, what other cities are doing, and if, you know, if we are missing anything that is a best practice somewhere else, that we have a thorough discussion at council about that. Other than that, on Monday, there, September 30th, there is a pop-up bike ride, Vista Community Clinic in conjunction with Circulate San Diego. It starts at 3 o'clock at Luz Duran Park, and I'm really hoping that my bike works, because I don't think it'll be a user error, but maybe. So I gotta, I gotta practice before I, I bike in public. But, so if you see me biking around, it's, I'm getting some practice in for Monday. But I want to invite everybody. It's going to be really fun. You know, we're going to go through, there's different ways to, you know, cross the street when you're on a bike. So we're going to go through every single one of the legal ways. And it's just going to be a lot of fun. So, again, 3 PM, September 30th, which is this coming Monday, and it's from 3 to 7, although I'm not sure if you get there, you know, probably after 4, we'll probably be biking somewhere. So I don't know how that works, but they'll, they'll have a booth set up, I'm sure, like they did this last Monday. Oh, and speaking of which, so just a few days ago, this Monday, Vista Community Clinic, again, in conjunction with Circulate San Diego, did another pop-up, and they did a bus shelter at Luz Duran. But it was so cool because they put Saran Wrap on the sides of the bus shelter, and they just let people paint on it. It was such a cool idea. So I had to get like my little Picasso out, you know, and do a Vista mountain scene, because we have beautiful foothills here. So I just wanted to throw that out there. It was really, really fun. So I'm looking forward to the bike ride. I hope I see some of my, my colleagues on there, so that way I'm not the only one, you know, trying to ride a bike, and it's been years since I've done it. So, wish me luck, everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for sticking around. Appreciate it. Jeff Hahn, Fire Chief, thank you for 35 years of service, sir. Listening to what you did to get to where you are is pretty cool. Two years of volunteering, I had no clue. Like, that's pretty awesome, man. So thank you for everything you've done for Vista. Terry Woods has left, but I wanted to thank him for officially making the statement. He wasn't going to chain himself to the gazebo, because that was a definite concern here of the city. So thank him for that. And then also, in regards, real quick, I know we're not here to talk about the dog thing, but I just want to tell staff, in regards to barking dogs, I've been in touch with you guys. You've sent code enforcement out. You have been really responsive via email, calls, and texts. I think the problem with the enforcement is we actually have to witness it in order to find, and that's kind of what we might need to revamp. But we have definitely been dealing with our residents. We address their concerns, and we do everything we can. It's just a matter of how it's handled, and how can the policies be changed to help with enforcement. But we have done everything in our power, and we do always respond to all citizens' complaints. So staff, and especially Tony Winnie, I'd like to personally thank you for that.
Deputy Mayor.
You know, our noise ordinance, maybe we should revisit it, because we really are not functionally able to do much to enforce it. And this creates a lot of unhappiness when folks have these issues. And it, it makes everybody unhappy. I don't know what the change should be, but I have to agree with this idea that maybe we want to look at it. We are really powerless, and it's very, very frustrating. It's a bad situation because folks think that the city has the power to intervene, and oftentimes, we have to let people know that it's a, it's a civil issue. And I, I think we should look at it again. So, other than that, I'm all talked out.
Councilmember Rigby.
I never thought I'd hear you say that.
It doesn't happen often.
I want to say thank you to everybody who came out and talked with us tonight, and thank you for those of you who are still here. I wish the other woman who was talking about the dog issue was still here as well to talk offline about that. I agree. Bring it back. We'll have a conversation about it. Chief Hahn, thank you doesn't seem adequate as an expression of our gratitude for what you have done for our city, for our community, for our constituents. And, but that's all I can say is thank you very much. I wish you well in your next journey, your next chapter. I hope we still hear your bagpipes somewhere along the way, maybe at the Highland Games, I don't know. Anyway, I wish you the very best. I was going to talk about the crime report from the Public Safety Committee meeting on Friday, but I think the mayor already covered that. Crime in Vista is going down. So thank you to our community. Thank you to our Sheriff's Department. Thank you. Just thank you all around.
Thank you to everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you to Chief Hahn for sticking it out to the very end again tonight. He's at last, last, last. Okay, well, so, oh, I almost forgot you. City manager.
You can forget me, it's fine.
I was going to adjourn it.
For those of you that are still watching the movie, the meeting, I say the movie.
Thousands of people.
Yes, all, all, few of them. The city is holding the second community meeting this Thursday, September 26th, to gather input on types of projects the city should pursue using CDBG funds. So we'd encourage people to show up for the meeting. It begins at 6 PM here at the Civic Center, and you can find out more about it at cityofvista.com. We will not be having a city council meeting on October 8th, so you all will have the night off, and so will the public. And lastly, I do, too, want to commend Chief Hahn on almost 35 years of service with the city. That is a, not only a tremendous milestone for that many years, but seeing how he has worked so diligently the past almost four years as fire chief, and the energy and the effort that he has put through in that job is tremendous. Through some difficult times and challenges, he has risen up, and he's, he's shown why he is the chief. And so I appreciate his commitment, his passion, his guiding principles that he has for the department. They haven't waived. He's been very fair to work with, and he's not, you know, he promised he wouldn't leave until the department was on an uphill trajectory, and it is getting there. And so I just want to say, I'll miss you. I'll miss our friendship. You'll be missed in the city, and congratulations on your final council meeting of your career.
He might come back.
I doubt it.
He might miss us and come back.
No chance. He'll miss all of us, but, yeah.
Our, our, we have a guest, a guest attorney tonight. John Stone is here. I heard you're going to retire soon, too.
That's true.
I can't believe it. Been a lot, a lot of years. How many years?
19.
19, yeah. You've been here a lot of years, too. I think I remember when you were hired. That says a lot about me, huh? Yeah. How about our city clerk? Anything tonight, either one of you? Claire, Kathy, no? Okay, with that, I want to adjourn this meeting in honor of our former city council member, Major General Richard Dick Cook, who passed away on September 18th. Dick served on the Vista City Council from 1996 to 2000, and was mayor pro tem in 1999. Dick served on the city council with a passion and a vision for the city's future. And I remember, he often leaned on his Marine Corps military experience in order to get things done. He cared deeply for our city and was dedic, I always laugh at that because he was, you know, this is the way we're going to do this. But he always was, he, he was deeply, cared deeply for our city and was dedicated to our Vista community. I served with him for two years on the city council and noticed that he was the first to volunteer his time or to help out and ask nothing in return. He was just a great guy. He was a true patriot, and he, he's going to be missed. So our condolences go out to his family. And I want to adjourn the meeting this evening in honor of Major General Dick Cook, who passed away. So with that, we are adjourned.